All right. All rise for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with the student council report. Sebastian Wiesa, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sebastian Wiesa. I'm the student body president at Somers High School, and I'm here to give a little report on the high school. To start with an IB update, the IB program held an IB informational night for parents and students on February 8th. It was a great event, a lot of turnout, and the IB candidates, which is my peers and I, along with Ms. Scanlon, our head of IB at the high school IB coordinator, answered questions for parents and helped out our incoming sophomores into the program. On January 27th, Triumph held an amazing coffee house with some amazing performers. I highly recommend you come to the next one on May. Don't know the exact date, but it's in May. But yeah. And also, seniors went on their ice skating trip. It was a lot of fun. It was quite eventful. I heard from my brother that it was amazing. They had a great, everyone had a great time. Views amazing at Bear Mountain. On February 9th, the high school hosted our eighth graders for the annual Taste of High School Experience. This event was led by our peer leadership program, and the peer leaders in that program took eighth graders on tours throughout the school to help familiarize them. Students also heard from our amazing music ensemble, and they learned about the many courses we offer at the high school, and they also participated in a club fair where they got to see all the amazing clubs we have at the high school. This Thursday, Peer Leadership is hosting a dodgeball tournament, which should be a lot of fun. And the Friday before break, all students took part in one of our No Place for Hate activities. We listened to a speech about Martin Luther King Jr., about love, belonging, and creating positive spaces and places for others through our actions. In their classes, students reflected on how they can impact our school culture and climate with their actions. For the arts, the Cotonaw Museum of Arts held its annual Young Artist Exhibit, opening on February 11th. The exhibit features the artwork of seniors throughout the area and runs through March 13th. This year, student high school has eight seniors whose art is being spotlighted in the exhibit. That is Alina Arnoff, Cecilia Infanti, Gilberto Mora, Kayla Rosetti, Sam Sands, Emma Sherman, Olivia Sherman, and John Spatola. And all of their art is amazing. The exhibit is great. I recommend you go check it out. Spring sports starts March 11th, which is exciting. And congrats to all of our winner athletes who qualified for the New York State Championships. In wrestling, that was Ryan Ball and Ethan Stubber. In skiing, Josh Burkhart. And in track, we got a lot of kids, Andrew Vason, Arjun Oha, Aiden Meza, Haley Donovan, and Julia Dzinski. Also, huge congratulations to the varsity football head coach, Coach Anthony DiMatio, on winning the 2023 New York State Class A Coach of the Year. Coach DiMatio will be honored on Friday morning in Verona, New York. Our student council just completed our National Gold Council of Excellence application. The National Gold Council of Excellence recognizes student councils for their outstanding community service and fundraisers that they perform. And we've gotten this recognition, I don't know how many years, but a bunch of years in a row now, and we're hoping to get this recognition again since we just completed the application. We're also working in the student council to create how-to handbooks for all the events that we run across our class boards as well as our main student council. This is just trying to streamline all of our events, make sure we keep up to date, and ensure future student councils don't lose any great ideas that we've done. And also, we're in the middle of planning a Make-A-Wish Week, which is a fundraiser for Make-A-Wish, where students can pay $2 and make a wish, and that wish can be granted. And wishes can be anything like Mr. Bear wears a tutu for a day or something. You better watch out.
I'll pay down for $2, Sebastian.
Obviously, all the wishes won't be granted, of course, but yeah, it should be a fun, exciting week. I think we're planning it for the week before spring break, so it's going to be a lot of fun. For counseling, Mr. Kavanaugh wrote, "We have a lot to catch up on." Earlier this month, the high school held its first-ever FAFSA completion night. Financial aid professionals from local colleges volunteered their time to help parents and students complete their documentation and submit online in one sitting. Many thanks to Ms. Tracy for organizing this event out of the College and Career Center. Also, earlier this month, all 10th graders heard about career and technical education options at Bosie's by visiting tech center counselors. Interested 10th graders will have the option to visit the tech center and see their programs in person next week. The Bosie's presentation was followed by a presentation on the IB diploma option, since this is also a choice point for rising 11th graders. Ms. Scanlon and many of our current diploma candidates were involved in the presentation. Counselors are now working to take all student course requests for the next school year. By the end of March, parents will receive a course request verification and invitation to have an in-person meeting or a scheduled call to address any individual questions about course choices. This month, the wellness team members have also begun delivering DBT lessons to 10th graders through their wellness classes led by Mr. Cleary. After hosting 128 college visits this school year, wow, that's a lot, Ms. Tracy has been expanding the focus of the College and Career Center to include visits from representatives of the trades and other professions. Just today, a representative from the energy industry visited SHS virtually to discuss careers in propane, heating, and HVAC. Lastly, the spring covality social-emotional screener is scheduled for the week of March 11th to 15th. Parents are encouraged to access the information sent home this week for further information, including a link to all questions asked and strategies to support students' emotional well-being. Thank you.
Thanks, Sebastian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our PTA SEPTA monthly report.
And he's taller than me. So all five PTA units have been pretty busy doing lots of things, as you've probably noticed from all the parent squares, announcements, newsletters, and general information that you get. So starting with SEPTA, on March 1st, SEPTA is hosting a sensory-friendly movie night at Prospect Theater, the Prospect Theater. There will also be a parents' night out hosted by SEPTA, but of course, open to anyone, at Barnwood on March 5th. If you have any questions or want any more details, please email somerspta@gmail.com, and they will happily get to you. At Primrose, the PTA awarded a grant to the mental health team, Jeff Getman, Kate Bergen, Emma Durant, and Alana Webster, for the purchase of We Thinkers, which is a social-emotional learning series. The PTA is also planning a spring gathering for all of the families. We're going to guarantee it doesn't rain. I don't know how, but we will. I also want to take a moment to talk about SIS and our own Ms. Belger, because each year, PTA members are asked to nominate teachers, administrators, local community members, parents, and/or volunteers, who truly honor the overall purpose of the PTA, which is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities in order to be able to advocate for all children. I'm sure it'll come as no surprise to you that this year, Ms. Belger was selected as the winner from all of the New York State PTAs. Thank you. Thank you for your continued support of the PTA, and most importantly, all of our children. Somers Middle School hosted the 7th and 8th grade dance. You got a lot of emails about it, because it had to be rescheduled, and then rescheduled, and then rescheduled, but all good things are worth waiting for, and it was an absolutely magical night that was thoroughly enjoyed by all the students who were able to attend. The middle school PTA was also able to give a grant to Ms. Hauser, the French teacher, who is working on some cooking projects with the kids, so we were able to buy some of the materials that will allow her to make crepes and bring more of a hands-on learning experience directly into the classroom, and also a cultural experience. The high school is gearing up for spring activities, especially those highly anticipated senior activities. Maybe you've heard there's a prom, I don't know, it might be a thing they care about, but please, please consider supporting your child's grade level by joining the PTSA. The Somers High School PTSA supports many of the programs that students, families, and communities have grown to love and to enjoy. We can't do that without your support. One of the ones they do, hang up and drive, benefits every single person in this town, because as someone who is currently teaching their 16-year-old child how to drive, it's, and if you've been there, know it's a very nerve-wracking experience, so the more that can be done to make all of our children more aware of the need to be safe on the roads, the better every single one of us in this town is. We just want to also just thank all of the community and the PTA members for the recent passing of the Safe Stop School Bus legislation. This is an example of what happens when the PTA, the district, and the community work together. Somers was ahead of the game on this one, and one of the pilot districts for having any sort of programs about having the bus stops, the safe stops be more monitored and making sure that our kids are entirely so much more safer. Legislation has been passed to have cameras installed on all buses, and any drivers attempting to pass a stop school bus will be immediately ticketed by the Westchester Police. So now there'll be a pictorial record of it. You can't be like, hmm, I didn't see that. It's just, it's going to make everybody safer. And so we thank everyone that signed petitions, who called their legislatures, who basically made their voice be heard, especially Carrie Raitman and Crystal Krzminski, who were instrumental in it. Final thing that I'd like to talk about goes directly back to our bus drivers. Bus driver appreciation breakfast is coming up. This is something that we do as a council, because our youngest members up to our oldest members of our school community are all able to use the buses, be it for transportation to the school or to and from sports, and we are now able to come out of our COVID breakfast, where it was a grab-and-go, and have a sit-down event for all of our bus drivers, but we do ask for donations. If you got bored anytime I was talking, feel free to go to my school books and donate directly to it, and we would greatly appreciate it. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ross.
Now we come to the public comment for agenda items only. All right, so we do have one. I'll read it. All speakers will promptly identify themselves, a maximum of 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. No district employees or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later date and time. Questions requiring investigations will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response. All written statements shall be given to the district clerk.
Hi, good evening. First, I want to start saying Happy Independence Day to all my Dominicans. If you know, you know. Today's Dominican Independence Day, and I just have some question regarding the budget.
What's your name?
My name is Addis. I have a middle schooler in the district. So I have a few questions regarding the budget. The dean of student in the middle school, as well as in the high school removal, if you could let me know what is in place for that, or what the plan is going to be going forward in place for the middle school and high school dean removal. I also see that there in the high school, there's going to be math and technology in the high school that's going to be removed positions. I'm not sure if that is due to the class size. I know that there is like a, as the grades go on, the class gets smaller. I'm not sure if that's because of that, but if you could also provide any insight as to why these are happening, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Now we'll move on to the central office report. All right, so we're going to start off, this is a quick video. We're playing the whole video?
Whatever you'd like.
How long's the video?
Eight minutes.
We're not going to play the whole video. We're going to play a brief part of the video, but I wanted it in the agenda. The link is in the agenda, so anybody wants to go see the whole video, great, go ahead and see it. But I did ask for this to specifically be put into here. This is the executive director of the state of New York, the statewide school finance commission. So anyway, what it does just highlight a little bit about kind of what's going on with the state budget and some of the changes to the foundation aid that's coming through that, you know, some of these decisions that we're making in the budget tonight are as a result of, in addition to many other economic factors that are contributing to some of these changes that we need to make. But again, we're just going to do a brief part of it, and then I suggest if anybody else wants to continue watching it, go to sleep tonight. They can go ahead and do that at home.
Welcome back to Capitol tonight. Over the last few years, Governor Hochul has brought school funding up to record levels in New York State by fully funding the primary school aid formula that funds schools, but according to education stakeholders under her proposal this year, many school districts are projected to see a decrease in their aid allotment, which may result in drastic reductions to student programming and opportunities. Joining us to explain is Dr. Rick Tims, Executive Director of the Statewide School Finance Consortium. Rick, great to see you.
Thank you.
So how is the governor's 2.4% increase in funding for schools actually a decrease, according to many in the education field, including you?
Well, inflation's at 4.1%, and the increase is at 2.4. So off the bat, we've got a deficit rate. Right. The second thing to consider is that there were about 280 districts that actually had what we call Save Harmless. In other words, the formula had actually matched out the aid that they should get. And many of these school districts have lost enrollment over time, even though their mission had increased drastically, especially in the last three to five years. So what has happened now is about 337 school districts are having their aid cut by about $167 million. So you have districts that are rural, small districts, some suburban districts whereby hundreds of thousands of dollars, and in some cases, millions of dollars are being subtracted from their state aid payments. So this is going to put a big crimp in their revenue, and I believe jeopardize the programs that they already have. So that's why there's a great deal of dissatisfaction.
All right, got it. I know that you mentioned Save Harmless just now, but there are a lot of people who are watching who don't exactly understand what Save Harmless means. Could you explain what the governor is doing with the elimination of this Save Harmless idea?
Sure. Save Harmless is the idea that there's a formula that distributes aid to all schools based on a number of factors. Some of it is income and property wealth, some of it is the needs of students, whether students with special needs, such as special education students, students who live in poverty, communities that have high levels of poverty, things like this, as compared to those that don't. So what has happened is these school districts have done what we would call fully funded. In other words, the formula has actually run out of the ability to pay them more money. And part of this is because aid is paid on a per-student basis. And many of these school districts have lost students over time. So if we're going to be dividing this up per student, and they have less students, it would appear that they should need to get less aid. But of course, as we all know, and I think you had an interview earlier in the week, where you had a couple superintendents explain that our mission has expanded tremendously. So even though we have less students, the costs continue to escalate because of labor costs, pension costs, health insurance costs, but also because of student needs, where we have mental health needs, things like this. So what the governor is actually saying is, look, if the formula says that you've lost students and therefore you shouldn't get as much aid, we're going to take aid back. The big problem, of course, with this is, is these districts have taken on new missions to supplant the need for that aid. That's number one. But number two, no warning at all that they would be losing aid.
This is very fast. This is a very quick turnaround.
Yes. So what's actually happened, it's kind of like everybody, like getting everybody in the factory together and saying, hey, remember how I promised everybody good times? Well, guess what? I'm cutting everybody's salary, so you're just going to have to make do.
All right. I'm not sure how that audio went through for everybody, if everybody's going to hear that, but again, I do suggest people go back, right? So it's a little bit of a, you know, again, part of the economic tailwind. A, the budget has not kept up, you know, the state aid or state funding coming down from the state is not keeping up with inflation, you know, is one of them. I guess they're changing the distribution. Chris, you could feel free to hop in. You know this stuff inside and out, but there's significant changes on how that funding's coming through, in addition to our own, you know, some economic challenges with, again, inflation and all that stuff that we're dealing with.
Yeah, and right now, it's just the proposal from the governor with some of these changes. So they're going to negotiate some of that in the next month or so, and then we'll kind of, we'll have to wait and see where we end up. Hopefully, we'll get a budget that's adopted by New York State by April 1st, when we're supposed to have it. As a reminder, last year, we did not get it by April 1st. We got it sometime first week of May, I believe. So that creates problems in itself, because like last year, if we don't have a budget in time before we adopt our budget, then we're going to have to go with whatever the numbers the governor's budget is showing us at that time.
Yeah, great. All right, so now we'll go, let's go into the actual, the budget piece of it. But again, those interested in the budget, I do suggest watching it all the way through.
So now we'll get, jump right into this next budget presentation that we have tonight. Tonight, we'll just again, highlight some of the budget development processes that we have here, and then we'll, for this presentation, this is on the instructional budget. So now we are going to break this down into each one of the school buildings. We have Primrose, we have the intermediate school, we have Somers Middle School, high school, and then we also have a section on special education. And then we'll wrap it up with how we managed to kind of balance the 24-25 budget and the challenges that we have been seeing. So again, this is the same slide we've had in each of our presentations. That just goes over the annual cycle for budgeting. Right now, we're pretty far along. We've been preparing the budget presentations and recommendations to the board. This last time, we did the non-instructional budget. This time, it's instructional, and then in March, we'll kind of just bring it all together as a summary. And again, then April is where we'd look to have the board adopt the budget, and then May 21st will be that budget vote and trustee vote. And just as a reminder, when preparing these budgets, the budget must be balanced, so revenues must equal expenses. And just listed are some of the high-level revenues and expense. So when we, we kind of changed the format up a little bit with our non-instructional budget and the way we broke it down, and then we had each one of the departments kind of come up and speak to it a little bit. So with the instructional budget, we kind of followed the same format. So each one of the buildings, we have each of the principals here tonight. So we'll walk through some of the budget numbers, and then we'll also then show some of the staffing at each of the buildings, and then a sampling of the services that each of the buildings has.
So maybe, Kitty, just before you start, we're just looking at the kind of the budget site here. You'll see this kind of go over for all different areas where this includes, again, the administrators, general education, special education teachers, teacher assistants, and et cetera there. The folks that we identified on the first non-instruction area was the custodial and maintenance staff, and so those were already shared out. So those are not in here. Again, increases that you will see in there, and the team will walk us through some of those details about mental wellness support, additional education support, and then, you know, the average, kind of, the annual salary increases from a year-to-year piece and stuff. So we'll hit Primrose first, and then we'll kind of then shift over to the other campus. So thank you, Kitty.
Hey, good evening. You can see the Primrose slide up there, and I'm happy to talk with you about the budget as it pertains to Primrose. As you see up there at Primrose, we have 114 staff members. This number represents all of our colleagues at Primrose, whether they work in a part-time or full-time capacity. When you think about, as I look at that list, from the moment you enter Primrose, you will notice the big picture, starting with our office staff, our teachers, and our teaching assistants. Looking more closely, you'll notice the personal way in which our staff members ensure a warm, welcoming, inclusive, and rigorous learning environment for all our students. And then on a daily basis, our students all visit a special area teacher, where they're enriched in art, and music, and library, and PE. And then we zoom in a bit to some of our other instructors, whether, when students need additional support, whether it be at the building level or for special education services. If you take a look up there, you'll notice that our special education personnel, our teachers, our teaching assistants and aides have expanded since the 22-23 school year, and that is to meet mandatory obligations of students with IEPs, and to ensure that all students have access to life at Primrose. Another piece that we're working on, this year, we were happy to realign our social-emotional support for students. We were able to add a .5 school psychologist in place of a social worker in order to have our psychologists focus on specific caseloads. Specifically, one of them focuses on our pre-K and kindergarten students, and the second on first and second graders. And when we talk about our pre-K students, we're talking about our preschoolers in the community who have IEPs, who are transitioning to kindergarten. We were also able to add an additional school counselor to increase counseling lessons for all students. Our students now have more access to counselors, where they receive Tier 1 instruction on social skills and behavioral regulation. The biggest positive we've seen has been the ability to move from a reactive counseling model to a proactive one, where children have the opportunity to practice and role-play strategies rather than be corrected after the fact. As we look at our second slide up there, you'll see the aspects of our success plan. We're proud of the rich curriculum that we provide at Primrose, and one of our big initiatives this year is around the science of reading, where there's great strength in our use of HEGARDY, which is our phonemic awareness program, and Foundations, our phonological program. We continue working on our personalized small group instruction so that each child can progress on an individual level. Through our staff development, staff have explored new materials to meet students' needs during small group, and have participated in a Science of Reading book talk and collaborative conversations about the multi-tiered system of support. And then lastly, we continue to expand our counseling lessons with an additional counselor and to maintain our high-quality responsive classroom practices that you've all seen at an earlier board meeting. In this way, we continue to dedicate ourselves to fostering growth, fostering the growth of our whole-child philosophy. So a lot, a lot will be similar with Mrs. Belger.
Thank you, Kitty.
So as a continuation, so much is similar between Primrose and SIS, as we have that K5 continuum. If you look at our staffing, we have 124 invaluable staff members. Some highlights that have changed in the past year or so is we have added world language. Two years ago, world language was for third and fourth graders. This year, we were able to add a .5, and now it is for fifth graders as well. So our, all three grades are focusing on Spanish, but our fifth graders are able to have an experience now with French and Italian, so they're prepared for the middle school and choosing which language they'd like to study. You'll also notice there was a big increase in our teacher and assistants and our teacher aides. We had an additional 13 staff members this year to support our IEP mandated needs and to support some of our students. And we were also very lucky, as in Primrose, to increase our mental health team. We were able to gain a full-time social worker, and this has been very helpful for our students, for their emotional wellness. We are now able to offer more class lessons, more groups, individual, small group counseling, and we've really seen a difference in our population. And if you look at the next slide, this is very similar to Primrose's. Many of our programs begin at Primrose and continue out through 5th grade. A few differences is HEGARDY ends, the phonemic awareness program K2, and Foundations does continue. We also are focusing highly on the science of reading, and our focus is taking our students from reading, learning to read, to reading to learn, with our focuses on background knowledge, building vocabulary, increasing comprehension strategies, so they can really move forward with their reading. World language is also different, which you already spoke about. In our social-emotional wellness column, one of the things that we've really worked on this year is executive functioning. It's been one of our very important initiatives. Teachers have done a lot of professional learning through study groups and full faculty, and we've really seen it's been a great help for our students in goal-setting, planning out schedules, self-control, discipline, and following directions. And we've seen some great results, and students are really responding well, so everyone's very excited about that. And in our global citizenship, one of the things- And in our global citizenship, one of the things that's a little bit of a shift this year is we had bucket fillers similar to Primrose, but the SIS students tried to raise the bar a little bit this year, and they decided they wanted to become heroes. So we talk a lot about how you could be a hero to a classmate, a schoolmate, someone in the community, or how you could affect the world, and we talk a lot about projects and things that kids are excited to do, and we recognize those each month. So there's a great amount of similarity between Primrose and SIS as our students move through the buildings.
Thank you Linda.
Any, we open up?
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, any questions?
Yeah, we can take that, Chris.
Can, can we get an explanation on the service agreements and other contractual, what that cost goes to?
I'm sorry, which one? I apologize.
The other contractual and service agreements.
Which campus are you looking at?
Uh, SIS. Or both.
Okay.
So some of that could be their conferences that we budget for, mileage reimbursement for some of those things. Yeah, I'm trying to think what else off the top of my head.
Conferences.
Yeah, it's not all gonna be conferences. I can kinda just circle back just to...
Okay. And as far as the mental wellness support, how much is going to that?
In say, one of these buildings?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look for a specific number. Are you talking, say, for, say, SIS in general, you're looking at counselor, psychologist, social workers? Yeah, I can, I can pull those numbers.
Isn't, just the increase includes the additional, is what the additional amount is going to?
Yep, so for SIS, it was really from 23, 24, it was a half FTE, so half of a teacher, sort of thing. And then there's also the additional special, special education supports. You see the big increase in teaching assistants and teacher aides, and that typically comes towards the later part of the year when they do their, all their evaluations, and if there's any mandated services that we need to provide, then we have to provide them, and then we look to hire the staff for the following year.
Okay. And for Primrose, the point, so there's a .5 added underneath the psychologists. Is that's the two? Is that .5?
Yes, so that makes two psychologists, but it was the .5, it was really a repurposing last, during the last school year, we had a .5 social worker. And instead of replacing the .5 social worker, we replaced that with a psychologist, making two whole psychologists.
Okay. And that's, that's the same for SIS, the plus?
It was a little different as in we added to the social worker that Primrose actually gave us the other half, so we had a full-time social worker. We had originally had a part-time, a .5 social worker, and we still have a 1.5 school psychologist that we share one with SMS.
So there's one full-time psychologist?
One full-time and one half-time. So we have 1.5 for school psychologists, we have a full-time guidance counselor, and a full-time social worker.
Yeah, so the numbers on the staffing here are actual employees, not FTE count. So like, like the monitors are part-time. So, but those are 12 people, not 12 full-time positions.
And it is not an increase in the budget overall, because we're just shifting people and how they're attributed to each building, correct? Like, we're not adding people, we're just adding FTE to your budget.
Right.
Individually.
And there's other, so for the Primrose, the psychologist takes care of the social worker aspect. Is that accurate?
Yes, it's really shared, those responsibilities are shared among the psychologists and among the school counselors.
How come we don't do the same for intermediate school? How do we, how can we have a specific social worker, instead of using just a psychologist and the counselors?
Yeah, at Primrose, it was really based on, based on the needs. We felt like developmentally, they needed a lot more classroom-based lessons, that we really wanted to teach them what it looked like to be a student, to teach them necessary social skills, whereas I think as they move up through the grades, they're probably in need of a little more small group or individual counseling where the social worker might step in.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just, Paul, can you check the livestream?
Yeah, it's locked up.
Oh, okay, got it.
It'll be, it's being taped, so at least be available afterwards if we need it, but for some security protocol, I guess that Paul is blocked out right now.
Yeah, questionable stuff on that laptop.
We just start rumors.
And we'll slide over to the middle school. As we'll see here, just as the overarching look and feel is the same of the other campuses, again, identifying some increases in here, as far as the people who are included in there, as well as some of the mental wellness support, we'll kinda kick those out over on some of the next slides, some special education report, supports there with our skip program, special education proper, as well as some additional instructional support there, and then the annual salary increases there. So I'll turn this back over to Jen.
Great, so at SMS, we have 111 total employees, and as my colleagues mentioned, that includes from our teaching staff to our monitor staff, all who play an integral role in our day-to-day life here at SMS. So a few things to note, next year we will have a skip class coming to us from SIS, so we will have an increase in special education FTE in that area, bringing on a new special educator to support those students in their role and their life here at SMS, and we're looking forward to that. We also this year increased in our SEL interventionist role. That role has taken on a wonderful life of its own and become a very important part of our school-building culture, and something that we are very grateful to have preserved in the budget for next year. Just like our colleagues at SIS and Primrose, we had a district-wide reallocation of our school psychologist staff, so we have one psychologist here with our, in our building who serves seventh and eighth grade students and is with us full-time, and then we share one of our psychologists with SIS, who services our sixth-grade students, and then travels across campus to service our fifth-grade peers and colleagues. So those are some of the big highlights. Chris, if you wanna, thank you so much. So in the same fashion, highlighting major key programs that support our building schools, we are working with our colleagues from K to 5 on literacy initiatives and support through the district's work with science of reading. We have a wonderful consultant who comes and works with our colleagues in our ELA department, as well as in our content areas, and thinking about what does literacy instruction look like in the middle school environment to support students' reading needs in content specifically. And that is work that has been ongoing and work that we're very proud of. Highlighting some of our social-emotional wellness work this year, Ms. Cespedes, who is our SEL interventionist, has been spearheading our middle school mentor program with Mr. Arnett, our dean of students, and support of Mr. DeCintio, our interim AP, and as well as Mr. Kavanaugh, our district director of guidance and student support. That program has really taken on a life of its own. We have 60 students in the eighth grade who volunteered to be part of that pilot program, supporting and mentoring their sixth-grade peers. They come to lunch and recess for sixth graders, providing enriching activities and connecting with their peers. Before break, there was a very lively karaoke in sixth-grade lunch, led by our eighth graders, and it has definitely created a wonderful and positive atmosphere in sixth-grade lunch with the addition of their eighth-grade peers modeling and connecting with them in a different way. And I'm looking forward to seeing how that program grows and continues to enrich our building culture. In terms of our global citizenship work, our building as a NYPD authorized school, we are continuing to work on our interdisciplinary connections, as well as our focus on skill development, ATL skills, and what does that look like, feel like, and sound like in all of our classrooms. So those are some of our big things. Oh, and our other big thing is our community project, Full Grade, for the eighth grade. So our entire eighth grader, eighth grade cohort is participating in the community project for the first time this year. Please make sure you have that date for the showcase, which is May, now I feel like Sebastian, May 4th? I'm gonna say May 4th. May 4th on your calendar for that showcase, to highlight some of the students' great work, and there's some wonderful projects that kids are really taking ownership over in our building. Those are the big things. I'm kicking it off to you, Mark.
Just another quick question.
Questions first?
Um, I see there's a big jump from this year, from last year to this year with the contractual as well.
That is gonna be for a day that we're picking up for the student assistance counselor that we contract out. A large portion of that is currently paid for with our Drunk Free Communities grant, and as we've added on, we have one at the high school, and now we have one full-time here at the middle school. And as we now, we're in our second kinda five-year cycle with the grant. We then have to then kind of wean us off of the grant as we move away from it, cause it's only for the 10 years. So we'll be adding a day each year that the general fund's gonna pick up as we move through the next five years.
Okay. And also looks like we have the lesser of the employees, from the middle school down to the two other schools, why such a big jump in salary? We have more, we have less teaching staff here than the other two schools, but the jump in, in the salary budget looks quite different.
Yeah, I think just budget to budget, with the additional skip class that we're gonna have.
It looks like millions.
Compared to SIS. Well, so a lot of SIS and Primrose, I'll have to go back and just double-check some of the...
Also being that we cut two positions, it seems that, alright, so why is it so significantly higher?
Which two positions?
There's a dean for the middle school, right?
So those numbers are not included in here. So the, cause the additional cuts further along in the presentation, so dean and stuff are still in these, these numbers, and then we pull them out.
So what, is it just different teacher salary from the different schools?
Yeah, certainly be part of it.
That jumps it so high?
Yeah.
I mean, cause the Primrose is at like 8.7.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to look at, say...
Middle school's 10.8.
Like gen ed teachers.
SIS is 9.7.
Just gen ed teachers, you have 47 at the middle school, 41 at the intermediate school.
My thought is, do you have more monitors and aides and assistants at the younger grades, which is a lower salary point?
Also again, the amount going to the mental wellness support.
Yeah, I can say that louder. What was that question? Pat, say it louder.
Just again, like the other two, how much is going to the mental wellness support in this figure?
Yeah, so we will very clearly see the alignment to the overall district mission and values when we've got, as you heard, approximately 22 additional FTE for special education across our school so far, and about two additional mental wellness reports so far. Yes, so that, that is in alignment with where we're talking about supporting students' social-emotional wellness aligned to the overall district goal. So you will see an increase in this building, which Jen spoke a little bit about, our social-emotional learning interventionist. Again, the piece of there, and I like the way that the team described, being proactive as much as we possibly can, as when we get to that point in the budget a little bit later, as one of our community members spoke about, how do we kind of adjust? We're getting a little smaller, so that is a part of why we're looking to reduce those positions, but also having this in place allows us to be proactive to working with the children there. So it is as much as we can to, to support the wellness of the kids, so. And those are elements we'll talk about later, but what came forward, but those are certainly where it's coming from. It's, it's all landing in those two spots, for sure. Any positive increases there?
Just another clarifying question. So the service agreements and other contractual, so that would be like contracted staff? So if you have like a, I don't know, occupational therapist or a reading teacher, or somebody that you, that's not hired on faculty, but we have them come in for...
Any contractual staff.
Contracted, so somebody we don't pay the benefits for, but we would pay a fee to?
Yep.
That would be in that category?
It could be, if we, if we allocate it specifically to a building. I'm trying to think for, say, for the middle school.
You mentioned the one at the middle school there with the contractual services.
Yeah, with the student assistance counselor. That's definitely one of the biggest ones that I can think of off the top of my head.
And just for clarity, so of the roughly 570,000, to be clear, if we did nothing, no ads or anything like that, 400 of the 570,000 increase is just by contractual...
Approximately, approximately.
And that's where again...
You had 170,000 based on the changes that you made?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks Jen.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanna make it known, I will not be wearing a tutu. No matter how many tut our wishes get.
And Mark, just before, maybe, can I just hit the, the budget summary here? Just to maybe head off, a few questions that might pop up. Service agreements and other contractual, you'll see that number significantly jumped from 22, 23 to 23, 24. One of the main reasons there is for the decision last year to pay for the AP and IB exams for students, to kinda remove that barrier from any families that were considering taking those classes and taking those exams.
Can we get a breakdown of the two?
Sure. Yep, and then just the other kinda bigger variable here is just the BOSI service. That line is essentially for our career and technical program at BOSI's, and the way they do it, it's on a three-year look back on data points, on enrollment, and depending on what classes people are actually taking, and what, it depends on the number of sessions that they counted as, so, but it's on a three-year look back. So that's why that kinda number just goes all over the place. It's what BOSI's kinda provides us. So even if we were to say that we're not sending any kids to BOSI's career and technical program tomorrow, we're still gonna be paying, because we're paying for the past three years. Not that we're ever gonna say we're not gonna send our kids to BOSI's, but I was just trying to use it as an example.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, so high level of staffing at the high school, not a lot has changed from last year to this year. Wanted change that has happened across, when we looked at the reorganization of the mental health and wellness teams at the high school, we did have one of our school counselors who moved over to the middle school. That position was replaced by a social worker, giving us two full-time social workers. Just a few years ago, we used to only have .6 of a social worker at the high school, with two school psychologists as well. We now have two full-time social workers. That has allowed us at the high school to start to experiment with what we're calling student support teams, where currently our ninth graders, eventually it will expand out to all four grades, are serviced by a team of an administrator, so one of our assistant principals, two counselors, a school psychologist, and a social worker, so that we have smaller teams looking at supporting those students on their mental, mental health, wellness, physical wellness, et cetera, as well as from an academic point of view. So 155 employees, instructional employees at the high school, and if you could switch to the next slide, some of the things that we continue to, talking about, you think about that video that you heard, that the phrase of increased mission, right? So over the last several years, we have thought about our programs throughout K through 12, and tried to figure out ways to better support students, and to, to give students programs and pathways that, especially at the high school, that prepare them for life after high school, that do allow them to pursue their passions, which is part of our district's mission. So one example of that is our Project Lead the Way program. That has been in place for about 11 years, came in, I think, maybe actually 12 years. My first year, I think we brought in the engineering pathway, and over the last couple of years, we also instituted the biomedical sciences pathway, which has been hugely popular. This year, as you know, we've talked about this before, we instituted our Tusker 101 class, which is a, basically it's a freshman seminar. Many, many schools throughout the area have had and played around with the idea of giving our freshmen a common assured experience as they transition from eighth to ninth grade to support them and teach them some of the softer skills that we oftentimes assume students come to high school with, but necessar, don't necessarily have, and do need to be taught some of those things, like communication skills, planning skills, even some study skills. And I'm gonna kinda jump back and forth between the two columns. One of the things we've also done, and this is K through 12, but particularly at the high school, is we've been working at increasing our faculty's understanding of executive functioning and how to teach into those skills, and that has become part of Tusker 101 as well. Next year, we will be implementing Tusker 102 for all of our 10th graders, which will prepare those students for the personal project, which is the Capstone project that they will do at the end of 10th grade as part of the NYPD. And so that leads us to, we continue, we're in our sixth year of being an IB... continue, we're in our sixth year of being an IB diploma school. We are implementing, we're in the first year of implementing units in our middle years program as we move towards authorization in that for grades nine through 10, so that we will have that continuum for grades six through 12 for, or six through 10 for the NYPD, leading to IB at the high school for 11th and 12th graders if they choose that pathway, or choose a course that is an IB course. And then I think one of the things that we've been looking at, we used to have, when I first started here, our WISE program, which is the WISE Independent Senior Experience. It was a selective group of seniors who went through that experience in the last part of their senior year on doing either an independent, independent research project, or a passion project, or actually do sort of more traditional internships. We have been piloting with our English teachers, having that be expanded to all 12th graders. And so we're going to continue to do that and think about ways of having that be a bigger chunk of their last few months of their senior year. So that's another part that I think has been a great value added to our school. And we continue to just support our students in a variety of ways, through extracurriculars, our athletic programs. We've increased our athletic offerings. As you know, a couple of years ago, we added flag football for our female athletes. Last year, we added a boys volleyball team, which was, again, very popular. Some of our kids who have never played volleyball and, and came out and they did an amazing job. And we have actually one student who's looking to the possibility of playing at the collegiate level, having never been able to participate in that sport before. So it's been great. So that's pretty much, I mean, there's other things in here as we go through, really taking a look at increasing our supports of students in classroom lessons. Our increase of the wellness team has allowed us to really take a look at doing small group work with students around issues that hit high school students, particularly one of the ones that was, was very popular and also very successful was one of our counselors and our, not school psychologist, sorry, social worker, did a group for student athletes around how to handle the, not only the physical, but also the emotional impact of having, going through an injury. So specifically at the high school level, when you are playing an inter-scholastic sport, and all of a sudden you get an injury and you're no longer playing that sport, it is a huge detriment to many of our students. And we've seen that impact play over not only socially, emotionally, but also academically. And so supporting those students, that's one great example of how those, that, that mental health and wellness team has been working together to support our students.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for the, for the high school?
Chris, we don't have in there the salary raise number on this, right? I'm assuming there was increases paid out this year to the.
Yeah. Yeah, I just.
Is it safe to say that it's?
Similar.
It's a similar piece of it, right? So if I calculate, the other one is roughly about 3.8% on that there.
Yep.
Right? So that's roughly about 600,000?
Yeah.
All right. So if you guys did nothing at all, no changes at all, and just left it stagnant, roughly that budget, salary item would be about 15.8 million? So what you did is you've guys, and it's only 15.4. So you've done some reductions, some changes on that. So.
So part of it, we do have, apologies up on the first slide, that was my miss. We did take any retirements that took place across the organization out.
Out of that.
Because we knew that.
Not putting them back in.
Because we, we knew that that was going to be, there's a pretty large delta between a teacher coming in and a teacher leaving the organization. So those are taken out across the board, as well as I think there was a note there about a technology or a transportation bus that we, we're getting a little smaller, we didn't need. So that was my bad, Chris. Sorry.
Yeah, that, that little note is on a slide, a few slides down from here.
What I'm saying is you guys absorbed the 600, only went up about 215,000 on that.
Yeah.
Right? That delta with just the salaries alone would be about 600,000, just on normal increases on it. And you only went up, salary's about 215, right? So there's the reductions and all that stuff in there. So we didn't go up to 2.8. We only went up to, you know, we didn't go up to 15.8. We went up to 15.4 with just those adjustments on that.
Yep. Are the four positions being cut reflecting, reflected in this?
Not as of yet.
They are already, they are included in that number.
It is included. So the ones that are being cut, so that still has to come out.
Right. So that number will go down.
Thank you, Mark. Then we'll move off, and Chris and I will do the special education piece here. Our director was not able to attend this evening, so we'll have us to walk this through. This is basically just centralized support. You will see the largest number in here relates to directly the number of out-of-district tuition. I'll let Chris hit that because the note at the bottom is also an important part, as the state has backed away from surprising some funding here to the total amount of just almost $1.4 million over the last five years.
Yep. So that added district tuition number, and you'll see a couple of slides, kind of shows where the students are going. But so a few years ago, back in 1920, for any of our residential students that are placed out of district, the state usually picks up a maintenance cost of about 18 and a half percent. And then a few years ago, they decided to shift that cost over to school districts. And every year, it's been included to continue to have it shift to school districts. And now this year, they are looking to make that permanent. So just from the, you know, the few students that we do have in residential programs, these, it is costly. And just, it's about 275,000 a year that we are absorbing now that we didn't have to a few years ago, when the state was, was picking up that part of it. And if it does become permanent, then obviously we, or, you know, be expected to pay for that moving forward.
Then, Chris, is that just for the residential placements, or is that for any out-of-district placement? Just to be clear.
I believe it's just for the residential.
Just for residential, right?
Yep.
So it would include, I don't know if we want to talk about, because we haven't gone to the slide yet, but in two slides, so that would be the seven students that are residentially placed.
Right.
And then the out-of-district tuition budget covers 21 of those students that are in that list, if we go forward to the out-of-district placements.
Yep. Everyone except the, and that slide is the BOSI students that are, that has its own budget line here.
Right. So the BOSI's, the 16 kids in the BOSI's would be covered in that BOSI services 2.6 million budget.
And that's not just, say, tuition out of BOSI's program. That includes any kind of related services that, that people are getting as well.
Okay. The, have we done anything in terms of advocacy? Like, should we be inviting in some of our state representatives to, you know, to meet with them and, and talk specifically about the impact to our budget? I mean, because that's like a couple of teaching, you know, a couple of teaching positions, the expense of.
Today I had the chance to speak with, to, to assemblymen today and a couple of weeks ago as well to.
Directly.
So it's been really helpful to be part of Lower Hudson Educational Council. So I've had multiple opportunities to drive this point forward. So they're very receptive to hear it. And so we have a very active group of council in the Lower Hudson, Westchester area. And so, yes, we've been able to do that. And with the advent of Zoom, I've been able to access frankly more now than ever before. So yes, we actually share that as recent as of today.
This, this also came up in the Westchester Putnam Legislative Summit that I attended. And yeah, they, they talked, they're advocating for that as well in that organization to make sure that, because at this point, they're trying to shift the entire cost onto local districts, and that's going to be costly.
Yeah. I knew that was a good point of advocacy there. And yeah, that's, you know, I think maybe we need to do more, be more persistent. As board members, we, each one of us could reach out and contact too and sort of drill home that.
And if anyone watches the end of that video that we were showing earlier, the gentleman mentions kind of mandates that come down from the state that then districts are having to absorb the costs of some of these items.
Yes. This is just one of the things. There's other points of advocacy that we can work on too. Okay.
It's how the governor's managing her budget and balancing it and just passing it off to everybody else.
What is the maintenance cost? That's for residential students that are.
18%.
Yeah. That's what the, the state used to pay. And now they shifted that to us, and they're looking to make that permanent.
Is the BOSI services directly related to headcount, or is it the 16 that you have below?
No, it's not just those 16.
Is it percentage base of our overall population?
Yeah. I mean, there's just students that receive.
So it's based on.
Other services, yeah, that were required to provide. And then Heidi, to your point earlier about that service agreement and other contractual line, you know, it's a big dollar amount here in special education. That's where we usually have all the kind of other outside providers that are coming in maybe for PT or, or speech, if we have to hire a consultant.
Evaluations may have to be done once in a while as well, too.
Evaluators. Okay, yeah. Like summer, the summer support and that kind of thing would be in there, too?
Summer wouldn't be in here, because that's separate extended school year program that we pay out of a different fund.
Okay.
But during the year, those services would be in here. So they're not typically broken out by building.
Okay.
Kind of a district-wide.
Okay, I got it.
And then just as the salary, and this is again, centralized, because as we went through before, all the staffing positions reside out in the building, in those building level reports. So you can see here with the director and assistant director, the office assistants, and then the CSE, CPSE chairperson. And then this is where, I think you were speaking before, Amanda, about the out-of-district placements that you can see are identified here. And then you could carry those back up into the, the budget that was above. And then this is, these next couple of slides are just a refresher from where we had Mrs. Elkhon in here a few months ago, just went through over the classification percentage of our students in there, as well as that continuum of services along the path. And again, the hope is to have the least restrictive environment as much as possible. And so you will see that at times, depending upon the child and the child's needs, students will kind of float here a little bit back and forth in continuum of services with always the intent to have the least restrictive environment there. But once again, always following the, the guidance of the IEP process on the annual basis and tri-annual basis to develop those plans. The next piece just gave us a snapshot of those related services that are being delivered to support the children's related needs. And you can see those areas outside of, of, of what we had before, the hours per month, as well as the number of students that are involved in those services that are there. As we've talked before with Stacy here at board meeting, we're, approximately 20% of our children need special education services to support their learning pathway. And so you're talking one out of five students here in the organization right now are in need of support from the special education side. You will see the large increase, I would say, of special education support through the self-contained instructional program, maybe the ICT program, teaching assistants, teaching aides that go along with that is in direct response to the, the required support for the children.
And that, like that counseling number only reflects students that have counseling on an IEP, not, not general education students that are getting counseling, which we have a lot of. Okay.
Yes.
Just real quick to the out-of-district tuition. What are the other public school programs? What?
What are the programs that they're providing?
Yeah.
So there's a couple, I'd say, I want to say maybe some therapeutic support programs that we.
So Bedford would be the closest example that I can think of that we've used that does have a truly therapeutic support program. They do have a number of students from a number of school districts that come forth with that. We have a small number, as you can see, between the three schools that need that level of support. They kind of have, for a number, I think a couple of decades now, have hosted the program in Bedford. So they have a, a large student population because they're bringing students to help offset that cost. That's where it's advantageous for us to help support the child and the needs that are needed there to go to a school district like Bedford, as opposed, we could not deliver that program for, even if student, students were four, if they were the same, we'd be able to do that. So that's where you'll see those numbers into some school districts, other public school programs that fit that need.
What type of program was it?
It's a therapeutic support program is what Bedford. I wouldn't want to misspeak for the Pleasantville and Head Hud, because without Stacy being here, I wouldn't want to misrepresent that.
But so it's four students, and each of the programs would be slightly different, I would imagine. So for us to run this same kind of program here for one student, when, when, you know, one, two, three, or four students really wouldn't be possible, right?
Yes. And that's, that's a challenge. And that's a part that we're seeing, and actually that, I know the team didn't speak about it today, but some of our wellness reports that we're seeing is, is starting to lean its direction towards a, you know, provide support for students in district to get the support they need, so we can go ahead and maintain those children if it's inappropriate for their educational learning plan in the school boundaries. And so the high school has what's identified as a transitional support program. The middle school, what's identified as a true north program. So when a student maybe is challenged with some, some other needs outside of perhaps the academic piece that's being taken care of, social, emotional side, our faculty is able to respond quickly and connected to the schools. Mark was talking about the high schools with the wellness teams there. So it's a placement that's intended to be a temporary kind of a placement. The students kind of have flowed up and down sometimes through the year. Often the holidays are a very challenging time for individuals, and many times our children are. So we kind of help them get through it, and then they're able to access fully back to class. But again, that's the ability for us to work with our, our teachers and our faculty proper to be able to provide that program. So it's not a full, every day, beginning to the end, like some of those other public school programs.
So the high school transitional support and the middle school true north are sort of therapeutic support programs, but on a smaller scale, temporary.
I think that's actually the light version of that. Yes.
Light version. Okay.
What is the true north program? Can you explain that?
So that program is, let's say that, actually Mark mentioned a process that our high school team is going through this year, supporting children who go through athletic injuries and things like that. We've had that happen. We've had students with concussions and things. And so what we were seeing maybe before is that it was almost, it switches on and switches off, where they might not academically be able to make it through a full instructional day with us. So they may come in for the morning in a smaller setting to get support for their academic work and maybe do lunch and then head home, or vice versa. So it's a chance for us to support these kids for a variety of different reasons. Could be challenges in the home. There could be things that have happened physically to them, as I mentioned before, or some of the social, emotional wellness pieces. So it is this program that allows us to keep the kids with us, is what we were seeing was that the students, if they weren't with us, then trying to get that access through home via either distance learning or tutoring coming a few hours a week, it was just not effective. So by keeping the kids with us, we are seeing that the retention rate there is, is higher and more likely for them to stay with us, as opposed to if they go to maybe an out-of-district placement, their likelihood of coming back is a lot, is a lot less. So it's a step process, either perhaps the students may need, their families may decide that there's a more intensive involved program they would need, and/or it could be on the way back from one of those programs that is coming from a very, very intensive piece and just going to the typical classroom next day, it's a walking them back into the school. So it's a, it's a shock absorber, I guess I would say, in a lot of ways.
And to be clear, these 37, oh, I'm sorry, hold, these 37 out-of-district placements were made, decisions made by the Committee on Special Education. So these weren't like, these were what was best for each child involved and not, you know, we can't provide those same sort of level of services here.
Yes.
Right. I have a question now. The four schools have lots of monitors. Are they all serving exactly same type of function, or is it?
So the monitors that were identified here, for example, like if you said, are you talking about monitors or the teaching assistants?
Primrose has 15, SIS is 12.
But it's a Primrose, just make sure.
SMS eight, high school is 12.
My fault. I just want to go back to the same thing.
SMS is less.
So right, those monitors are not full-time monitors?
Not full-time.
No, those are part-time monitors for recess time, before school drop-off and things. You may see our monitor team out there, making sure kids are getting on and off the buses safely and things, as well as during the, the day, as well as after school.
Why is this, high school seem to need more than the middle school?
So the monitors at the high school, we have the largest student body at the high school, the largest square foot at the high school. And we have, you know, the obligation, a lot of this takes place during those free passing periods, as well as during the community lunch, that we've got those areas supervised as best. Again, those monitors are again, are part-time monitors to support that work in there. When, again, with the high school, they're actually outside during the instructional, or during the community lunch as well, when there's time. So it's, it's a pretty big footprint that they have to cover, and we've got to make sure we've got some supervision on those kids. So that's the high school piece in there.
Yeah. I have a question for Chris. Do you have a rough sort of cut? What is the total special aid budget and versus the regular education, you know, including teachers, staff, and so on?
Yeah, I can, usually we do have that.
Let me make it simple. Is it special aid is about 35% or?
I'm not going to throw out any numbers right now, but we usually have that breakdown, usually in the public budget document that I can bring for our next budget presentation in March.
Is it close, close to 35% or not?
I just don't want to misspeak.
Because it looks like from people point of view, it's, it's quite a number of people that, you know, dedicated to special aid, right?
It's going to be a substantial number. But I can look to bring that forward at the next budget presentation, just to have it broken down between gen ed and special ed.
One of the pieces.
What are you looking for? Are you looking for teacher specific?
I'm thinking about it as a total budget. If, if our special ed is a fairly significant portion, in fact, we're doing a good job, should we have a sort of expanded special ed program to take all the special ed students from other school district into SOMERS?
I didn't do it very well, maybe when I was talking with, with, you know, Pat a little bit earlier, that the programs that our children go to out of district right now, we don't have the capacity to provide that to those children. have the capacity to provide that to those children. Seven of those are residential programs. We don't have that. Autism programs are very, very specific and that has to be the right fit for those. So we honestly don't have the capacity, either from the staffing, finance side or anything like that, or the just the numbers and things or the space. So right now, I would say, no, we would not be able to absorb those children here. And frankly, more importantly, it's not the appropriate placement is identified by the CSC process along with the families and the staff to say this is the appropriate place. We've been able to have some students rejoin us sometimes. Many times it is as they perhaps get a little older academically, we can rejoin them. So there's a conversation every year to see where is the best placement to support those children. So we would not be able to turn that on or off, that's just, that's not feasible.
Yeah, just look at high school alone, you know, it's more than forty people in the special ed versus seventy people in the regular education.
And with that, I think it's a cognitive shift where I'm a co-talk classroom teacher, Heidi is my colleague, we team teach together, we teach all the children. And so to say that, oh, just my special education, I should just go to the handful of students that I have in that class is probably not the most accurate way to do it. I don't think there's a great way to do it, but we're team teaching, we collectively own all the children in our class together versus there may not.
I understand that, but you labeled as special ed TA, special ed aid versus the regular education TA.
But that's their certification, but I guess I think.
So that means a different personnel.
It is, but I think the point is, is that you can't necessarily say that those teachers only touch special education students. That's what their certification is in, right? But you can't say that there's more.
No, that's my question, was this, is just a title or is it extra duty function related to the students?
They're required based on IEPs, the ones that are designated special ed, right? Versus the gen ed ones are not required based on IEPs.
Yes.
In the staffing part, where does the, do the coordinators and TOSSAs fall into?
They would typically fall under the gen ed teachers.
So both coordinators and TOSSAs fall under?
It would depend on.
So a TOSA is a teacher on special assignment and so that whatever that teacher's certification area may be in, they maintain that certification area and then they're on a special assignment. For example, as we work forward, looking at the deans, as we heard a little bit earlier, those are teachers on special assignment, they are carrying the role of a dean, but they're still in that tenure area, whichever that may be for them. So they're in that, that general education teacher area. And then, what do we got on the next, Chris? I think we just finished with Stacy's.
Yeah, we just finished with special ed.
Yep, okay.
Now it's just kind of bringing it all together. This is just a summary of everything that we kind of just saw. So you see a little over $2 million in increases. And now this slide is our anticipated revenue for the upcoming school year. Tax levy, we're looking at about 2.4 million dollars. Interest earnings, we've seen a significant jump in interest earnings over the past year or so, so we are bumping that up quite a bit, about 750,000. The state foundation aid, as with the video that we showed earlier, the, we're looking at $130,000 reduction. And I think as I spoke a little bit earlier, so last year, the state's budget wasn't adopted until after, beginning of May, when we're supposed to have it by April 1st. So we weren't able to use those numbers in our budget for last year. So we had to use the governor's numbers. So from the governor's budget to when the state adopted it, our state foundation aid dropped a little bit, like 150,000. So this year, we're actually seeing like a, it's like a 0.2% increase in our foundation aid and it's like $25,000. But from budget to budget, we're down about 130,000 because we had to go off the governor's budget, but then when the state adopted it, that's when our foundation aid dropped a little bit last year.
So that's, we're not actually losing from what we had, we're just not getting what you anticipated.
We are getting less than what we anticipated.
We anticipated, so we're not actually losing from last year.
Right, just budget to budget, we're losing, but in reality, yeah, I mean, we're going to be getting less this school year, 23, 24, than what we budgeted for foundation aid because the budget came in so late last year. So then, again, so then just building budget this year, it is a drop for us in our foundation aid, even though if you look at the state aid runs from the governor, it shows us going up $25,000 or so.
Okay, because nowhere it figured in the fact that we counted on a budget last year and then it was less.
Right.
It was after the budget this time, okay.
And that's still just an estimate at this point.
Yes.
And again, if the same thing happens this year where we don't get another number before it's, our budget's adopted, then that's the number we're going to have to go with, what the governor has.
So it could be better, it could be worse. We don't know.
Yeah.
Does the refund from Engelbrook affect our expenditures this year?
Uh, no, because that is going to come out of our, I mean, our expenditures are going to increase, but we're going to take that money from our capital reserve, tax reserve reserves, sorry. So yes, it'll show an increase in expenditures in our tax refund expense code, but that's going to end up, we're going to offset that by using the reserves for that. So then just moving down our fund balance appropriation and reserves that we use to offset the budget each year. So for 23, 24, it was about 438,000 and for next year, we're looking at just under 1.7 million. You'll see, there's a couple of slides down from here that shows kind of the history on how much we've used to balance the budget from our reserves and our appropriated fund balance. So I'll just talk a little bit about that more when we, when we get to that slide. And then the other is just some additional, could be building aid, could be our health services, just some miscellaneous items that total about 230,000. So we're estimating right now about four and a half million in revenue.
How do we come up with that number, 230,000?
It's a combination of just other revenue codes, so.
We don't know that we're getting that.
No, I mean, it's a projection for sales tax for Westchester County that we increased a little bit. Health services, on the business agenda tonight, we have our health services fee for this year. So now we're projecting what it's going to be for next year and the number of students that we're going to have for that. And then just miscellaneous other, you know, smaller revenue codes that we have. So this next slide is just showing over the past five years, what our maximum tax levy history has looked like. You see, three out of the past five years, we've stayed under the maximum tax cap levy to a total amount of around 2.6 million dollars. So that's money that we did not levy, did not seek that money from the community. So you'll see back in 21, 22, we did go to the, to the maximum tax cap number. And for 24, 25, we are also looking to go to that tax cap number. Bear with me for a second on this one. So this slide now is going to show, so this first, first chart or line here is showing what the inflation rate has been for the past five years. A couple, you know, a few years ago, it was under two. And then you see these past three years now, it's been up over four. And then I'm going to add in now the next line that shows what the inflation number that's used in the tax cap calculation. So those couple of years when it was under two, that's what we're allowed to use up to the CPI number. But then these past three years, when it's been up over four and last, last year was up at eight percent, we're, because of the tax cap calculation, we're maxed out at two percent in the calculation. And then this next line I'm adding now is what our maximum allowable tax levy limit was. So again, these past three years, because there's, you know, we are capped at that two percent of inflation to include in the calculation, but there's also exclusions that go into that calculation for debt service and then building aid that comes off of that. So you'll see for the past couple of years, our maximum tax levy limit was, you know, just shy of four percent. Next year, projected just shy of three percent. So that's the maximum levy limit, but from the previous slide, three out of the past five years, we didn't go to that levy limit. So now the actual levy limit that we did here, this is now the green bar, again, showing so for this upcoming school year for 24, 25, we're going to be going to that maximum. But then the last, so say last year, it was a, we went with a 2.8% increase when we could have went with a 3.59% increase. Again, inflation's up at eight percent last year. So we're still, you know, well below that.
So it's three years in a row of not being able to spend anywhere close to the amount of inflation increase. So would you say, I know the question comes up a lot that with our declining enrollment, you know, why does the budget keep going up? So have we been able to, do you think the fact that we've had the decreasing enrollment has helped us be able to function without making significant cuts with those parameters?
It's helped tremendously.
Yeah, I can imagine if you had a growing population or even it was the same, how do you keep providing the same services when you've got an interest, you know, an inflation rate of eight percent and you can only increase your spending by two?
Right, it's problematic. And from the previous budget presentation, you saw some of the health insurance increases that are well north of some of the inflation numbers even.
And from year to year, when we stay under the allowable, what's deemed the allowable tax cap for just the normal vote without being a super majority, the following year when it gets calculated, they don't go back and say, oh, you were under last year, so it's two percent plus what you were under.
No.
Where we're, it compounds because we.
Right.
By being conservative, keeping it a little lower.
Yeah, that money that we did not go to the limit for, we won't be able to raise that going forward. There has been some talks about trying to change that in the calculation to allow you to, to have that going forward. Because that number is before any of the exclusions. So when we add in our exclusions for our debt service and our building aid, that number's much higher than the amount that we're leaving on the table.
It provides an odd disincentive to keep costs a little bit lower under that level because it could potentially create a challenging situation down the road.
Thanks, Chris, and so I think we'll have to the use appropriated fund balance we said there.
Yep. So this slide, again, we talked about for next year, we're looking at about just shy of 1.7 million for the appropriate reserves and fund balance usage. Again, this goes back to all the way to 2011, 2012, where we were up, up about $2 million. And then you see the few years after that, 1.5 million, 1.4 million. Those years specifically, there were some significant increases in TRS retirement system rates. A few years prior to this, I want to say back in like 2005, 2006, the contribution rate for employers was as low as like 0.36%. And then it shot up to about 17%. So challenging times, but this is why we, we can use this appropriated fund balance and reserves to kind of offset and not make any kind of drastic changes to programs. Because on any given year, we always talk about how we have somewhere in, you know, two to three percent of our budget, either on expenses or additional revenues that we have. And then this is where then we can allocate some of those funds where we either put them in reserves or we can appropriate it to offset the following year's budget.
It's a shock absorber.
Yes.
Keeps things steady.
Yes, very good.
But the more of the fund balance that we use, the potentially less we'll have available for, for our reserves for the following.
Correct, yes. And so for next year, you know, we know it's, you know, almost 1.7 million. However, we know for this year, at the last budget presentation, we talked about technology contract that we're moving to BOSI's, that we know it's a, it's a significant increase for the 24, 25 school year. But after that, then we're going to start receiving BOSI's aid on that to the tune of a little over $500,000. So this is kind of like, you know, this number would probably be more in line with almost a million dollars if we didn't have that. But we know going forward for 25, 26, we'd expect that number to come down because we're going to be receiving that aid.
Right. And I think like Chris was speaking there as well, if you go back and coordinate the, you know, 22, 23 increases, you will see that that year we also left, I think it was around $660,000 un, you know, identified as far as our tax levy part there, and we was 528. So it has always been a balance and we're very well throughout the year with our citizens' finance committee and, you know, we were just coming out of COVID on some of these numbers and trying to figure out what's up and down. And so trying to use this fund balance to manage the shock there and to try to preserve as much as we could from our community of increased taxes beyond, up to that limit of three to five, over the three out of the five last years. And so even that 1.6 million dollar amount, we still allocated, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars that year instead of just taxing it, we said, we've got enough here, we're going to go ahead and manage that through that, so we don't levy all those dollars. So it is a, it is a calculated piece. We have used this for a decade plus now. And like Chris mentioned back, for those three years, it was a rough year with those increases in the retirement system. We did not use any of those dollars, they end up coming to the bottom line, just like we would anticipate next year, we just don't have as much to put in those other reserve accounts like you identified. Yet, when they're smaller, then we've got more to fill those, those reserve dollars up, like our tax search area we were mentioning this evening, where we're going to pay any of those tax search matters coming out of. We just settled a rather large property in the last couple of years. We managed that all through our prudent management of the tax reserve pieces there. And so when we look at tax search area redone, we already do that over a two-year fiscal period, avoided anything as far as additional interest rates on that, we took it 100% out of reserve dollars. So again, avoided bonding that, sometimes it happens at the board table, those dollars are bonded, so they got the interest on there, avoided. The same thing with our next piece, we have another large property or community getting closer to be resolved. We have the same tact and plan that we've got those reserve dollars built up and how do we step away that? So again, avoiding any of those additional dollars because of the increased numbers on those tax search area and multiple million dollar closings, that we have been able to manage that through the large ones we've had over the last 14, 15 years. So again, thanks for, Chris and also he's kind of going back and forth, quadruple checking on a daily basis, these numbers, bringing in our experts from our bound council and different things like that to help us understand what they're seeing as well too. So yes, we would not desire to be here forevermore, we won't. As Chris mentioned, we'll have already about a $700,000 increase in revenue next year because of the changes. If we held it another year, it just delays the pain another year. So by having that, we spent a lot of time on the non-instructional budget, moving that to a BOSI's line item, we're able to go ahead and generate those revenues right the next year, so.
Well, and similarly this year, from the last meeting, we had a significant increase in the health benefits and that's really what's hitting us this year really hard.
Two, two last years.
Two years in a row.
Actually, that's true, two years in a row.
And that's been another point of advocacy that I've heard and another one, we can add that to our list if we're talking to people to advocate. I know that with NISBA, they've been talking about, you know, that, that trying to get some kind of formula in place that works on an average so that you can somewhat predict it because the swings are crazy and at least we can have the reserve fund to help counter balance, you know, to help even it out. But it would be ideal if you could better predict what it's going to be.
And this is the first year in a long time, I'm trying to think of when the last time it happened, since the tax cap calculation went into effect, but the employees' retirement system is going up about 2.1%. So anything above that two percent is an exclusion in the cap, in the tax cap calculation. You know, small number, but again, it's just showing the different swings because I, it might have happened one other time since the tax cap's been put in place that it's gone up over the two percent. And it's two percentage points. When it's going up two percentage points, it's going up really 15%.
So we'll go ahead and then shift to the balance to the budget slide coming up next. And so this kind of summarizes everything down from each one of the kind of expenditures out of the different locations. And then that tallies up the total instruction amount for a little bit over $2 million. And you'll see the non-instructional at 3.3 that we spoke about at our last budget conversation and other incidentals across that Chris mentioned before, for a total just short of 5.5 million. And then the revenue change, the tax levy there again is staying at the allowable tax levy limit, rather about, approximately 2.4 million. The interest earnings, as we have seen certainly coming out of COVID, the interest at school district or our own bank accounts is, is moving up slightly. We always kind of move slow behind that, so that's based upon, you know, the revenue stream that we have seen over the last 18 to 24 months and slowly venge that up. So it's, it's a appropriate number. And then the state foundation aid, we spent a good deal of time about that one before. Fund balance is the increase we just came out of about the increased fund balance. And then other, we talked about that from Westchester, you know, sales tax and things like that. So you see the 4.5 million there is, they're approximately with a gap of about a million dollars. And then again, the note to bottom, retirees, transportation reduction taken in place. We mentioned before about the TRS rate, we kind of, there's a range that we get earlier in the year. They gave us the specific number, so now we've gone ahead and put that specific numbered in there and the increased fund balance leaves us there.
And that TRS number, just in the range that they gave us, we usually budget at the high end, just to make sure we have enough to cover it. It did come in right around the middle and that saved about $100,000 right there.
And so then the next part was kind of basically taking that conversation. And so then the next part was kind of basically taking that conversation out to kind of on a budget listening tour and work with our PTAs across the organization and then also our different leadership team building conversation, Citizens Finance Committee, you can see the list there. And so basically the query was thinking about preserve and protect. And so we need to kind of make some adjustments here, what should we preserve and protect? And then on the next slide, you'll see across all those different groups was, you know, as you can see, the class size, the different support structures, be it for students with social emotional learning needs, the ELL support, special education model, AIS support, solo support structures for children, as well as, you know, the, the technology which was looking at infrastructure, technology access for all children. Because again, we do have a one-to-one deployment for all our kids, all through K through 12, the strong arts program, as well as the professional learning program to support our children as best as we possibly can with the continuing challenges that we, we have in front of us. So with that knowledge and understanding then came to the, where do we make that gap close on the million dollar, roughly the million dollar close there? And so as we went through here, again, preserve or protect, keeping out of the classrooms, stay away from those AIS systems and the support systems for mental wellness for our kids. You will see the primrose staff was basically was flat. SIS piece there, you see there's a 0.5 reduction there and a 0.5 reduction at the middle school. That was a 1.0 that was split between the two buildings. So that position is teacher on special assignment, that position will be reduced for next year. And then off to the middle school here, you'll see the reduction of the dean and that, and a piece with a TOSA there that I had mentioned before. The dean part is there again, as I mentioned a little earlier before, when Jen was up speaking about the middle school campus and our work with, well, next year we're down about 550 kids here. So that's another step down in decline of size, as well as with our ability to go ahead and use from a proactive side, our social emotional learning interventionist with more tier two, tier three small groups to help the students proactively as much as possible. So that will be a key part in support with the dean. The reality is, is then you have your assistant principal here as well as your principal. And then the work that they'll be having to pick over, be working a little bit with the learning office, picking up some of the work that perhaps the AP now has to take because the dean is not there. So it's a, it's a reallocation as best as we can, again, staying out of the classrooms as far as possible. High school reductions there are really related to the declining enrollment there as we continue to see. Couple of years ago, we were just about 1,100 children and so we're going to be closer to a little bit 900 and then two years we'll step down a little bit closer to 800. So it's in advance of that a little bit. For example, the course offerings that would be there for the children, not impact on programs and such. But for some of our programs, we may, instead of replacing with a, a kind of a full-time position through attrition and things, we may be asked some of our teacher colleagues to take up a course or not. World language has, has been wonderful to us is that we've had some retirements there and in lieu of bringing back a new world language teacher for maybe two years, that team has come together and say, look, Ray, we'll go ahead and we'll take an additional kind of class each one of us. So we've got highly experienced teachers in there, they know curriculum, they know the kids in the school. It's, it's, we pay an extra period because they typically teach five, we pay the six. It's a really big win and it's, it's a great thanks to the teachers. So that part, we'll be seeing that a little bit next year. I don't know exactly where and when, but I know how it's done. It's done by our faculty who've proven time and time again that that's how, that's how they're going to do it. Nobody wants to bring on a new member of the organization knowing that they might be here for 24 months. And so they've been extremely helpful allowing us to manage this change as we step ourselves down. It's exciting to grow and to get all that stuff, it's hard to shrink. And, and I can't thank them enough for everything they've done. So those are areas that we'd be looking at. And for example, like in our technology, we're working with our math and our sciences team, how can they help kind of look at that STEM area and providing some of those courses? And Mark mentioned before about project lead the way as we look to kind of expand our opportunities inside of there with computer science and things. We have the staff in-house that will be able to do, it'd be just getting training going and reallocating over to do that. So those courses the kids are signing up for now and we'll have a better idea in the spring, but we'll be looking at that. And then just your drop in numbers, we won't offer as many sections, some areas as we did before, we just don't have as many kids when you have, you know, 850 versus 1,100, we've stepped those down. Sometimes we do that a little early, like one of the ones we're not going to fill this year, so we have overage. Sometimes we'll be a little bit late because they're, again, faculty's very kind to me, says, hey, Ray, you know, in about two years, I think I'm, I'm going to go ahead and kind of retire. Fantastic. So they let me understand, so we can work it through, so we can make that happen. And then when that does, then we know we're not going to fill it. But Chris and I can plan that out two, three, four years to know that that's coming and we can adjust where between, you know, shaking the whole system by making that reduction. So I can't, I can't thank our faculty enough for that.
So just to be clear, sorry, I was going to say, just to be clear, the reduction for the high school is due to enrollment and with, and we're handling it through the retirements, we're going to handle redistributing everything, but all of those course offerings will still be there, there's still going to be art, there's not a reduction in art classes or math classes or technology classes.
There'll be reduction in sections because we can't have a section of six kids.
Right, but you're still going to have all of the offerings as far as.
Yep, so we'll be looking at those offerings, just not the number of sections. And some things we've seen over the last few years is that the high school has done a very good job of cycling it, like offering a course like every other year just because the numbers can't hold it in one year, so they offer it every other year so they can kind of see that schedule coming. Again, to keep it, but it's offered every other year. So it's one, depend upon the kids, then they tell us.
And they let the kids know that it's coming, like, oh, you can't take it this year, but you can take it next year.
We have a look online next year, yep.
The technology part is not the one, the edu tech.
No, sir, no.
That's different, right?
It's a technology teacher.
Yeah. And then.
Another thing I want to ask, it looks like the counselors, number of counselors in middle school and high school is almost same. High school's five, middle school's four. Do we need that many counselors in middle school?
My opinion, 100%. The counseling though is look at it as a wellness, mental wellness team. Because the high school, as Mark mentioned before, on those teams, there's counselors, there's also social workers that are on those teams as well to support, as well as psychologists there to support. So from, from the overall.
In the psychology, every school has two, that, that's already there.
Well, this school has.
I'm talking about counselor itself.
Yeah, this school has one and a half. I'm just suggesting to you, that we look at it outside of not getting captured just in the title, but in their role of supporting the social emotional wellness of the children. Because next door, for example, at SAS, they have a counselor and a social worker. And so this campus does not have a social worker, they have a counselor instead. So I, I wouldn't use, you know, exact title by title, but how much is there for the mental wellness of the, of the children, not so much just the title? Well, you are right, we did add a counselor here this year for the, for the social emotional learning, but they don't have, you know, social workers like the high school does. So I just, I, I've, my colleagues have helped me with this many times, they really think about it from the wellness perspective, not just this role or that, or like, think about, you know, the roles that the team can do from those different pieces. They all have their own specialized areas, but they work as a cohesive unit.
So the high school counselors, the work duties different from middle school counselors?
Certainly, certainly, there's a different piece there in a lot of regards, in particular the high school is you're talking about pre-collegiate, pre-career kind of opportunities that kids are looking at, course selection and things there. It's fairly straightforward here again, as much as we can, the social learning side is, it happens at this campus. Again, social workers are helping a great deal at the high school as well too. And then your, the complexity of challenges continues from early adolescence, certainly to middle adolescence, and that continues to grow at the high school. And then the district-wide reduction of two FTE there, we, again, those are teachers on special assignment. So there's two roles that currently work out of learning office, one is the MTSS coordinator, multi-tier systems support, that you heard a few of our administrators pre-go out today, that will be pushing more over to the learning office as best as they can. And then the second one there is the diversity, equity, inclusion coordinator, that that position will be reduced there again. And how do we bring that presence to the district as best as we can? We have a coordinator in each one of those buildings that we'll be moving forward to be a stipend position in each one of the buildings, so they are a member of the building leadership, teacher leadership team, and we'll be looking to partnership with as much as our BOSI's. We will not be able to do, you know, the things that we were working to do of, of the amount of, you know, seat meetings before, before we had, you know, this position five or six years ago, life coordinator and different pieces. We ran that seat as best we could, we've been doing a lot deeper dive in the sub-communities, that's just not something we'll, we'll be able to do. We'll keep our work going, we'll have people in each one of the schools, we'll partnership with BOSI's to bring those resources in for our professional learning pieces in there. And the same thing goes for the MTSS or the data analysis side of things. So we'll work within the learning office as that team will have to pick up more of that load and then we'll also be working with, you know, our technology team now, with myself and Kim Blau, we were talking and have been talking about how can we support our, our billing administrators and teachers to make sure they've got ability and access to the information coming out of the classrooms to make decisions. So that rounds out to the eight FTE there, gets us to about that million dollars. And then Chris will just show it the next slide and kind of where that, that non-instructional, instructional expenditure is and the other total there, about the 5.5 revenues, roughly 4.5. And then that variance was just short of the million dollars, we mentioned. And then how we close that gap based upon the community feedback, based upon staying out of the classroom size, based upon staying away from those support structures directly for the children, be it AIS or be it special education support, or be it social emotional wellness support. We did that, started far away as we could from the classroom and then we've landed with that variance. If we happen to get more unanticipated revenue, let's say the state tubs come down with that $200,000, we're going to reduce our reliance on reserves. That's where we would, Chris and I would suggest we would go, what about the 1.65, we'll reduce that $200,000 if that comes in, that's how we're going to kind of adjust anything. Again, it usually will come till May probably, I do not think it's going to be here before the vote. So if we find out May later, we've got a positive variance, we're going to reduce our reliance on those reserves and bring those down a little bit, so.
Good, quick question.
Yes.
So the deans, so those, their roles are going to the hands of a few, correct?
I'm sorry?
The role of the dean is going to be passed along to the.
It's, it's basically again, a team reshifting of the information, yes.
Okay. And as far as the TOSAs and art teachers in math and technology, those positions are being cut, not the person, correct?
So.
The people are being reallocated to doing something else.
Some are, are not here, is it through retirements and things like that? Yes, so it just depends upon position, to position and things.
Okay, so.
As you, what we will see, because we do have some other retirements in other areas in the organization that some folks may not be credentialed for, will be hired. And so for example, in this campus, I know we'll have a few hirings and things. For example, we have one posted right out now for an Italian teacher in this campus that we're looking to hire because we have, thank goodness, again, faculty is amazing, one of our teachers who retired, came back for a full year with us to help us get through this really difficult journey. And so we're looking right now for another Italian teacher to help us get moving. So every person might not be in the same role there, but they would have an opportunity, hopefully to be another role in the district, but you have to be certified.
Right, so the, just for example, the two TOSAs that you say are being reduced?
Yes.
Those, those two positions are being reduced?
Yes.
Not there, they're not being reduced from the district?
Right, those role, those people.
So they're just being changed to another.
Different roles that they are certified for in other areas, correct?
And you mentioned that certain teachers are going to be taking on an extra class.
Yes, yes, very good point. And that's again, been very helpful, so we're, you know, instead of being down three sections or really jacking up those class sizes, which we heard was definitely something we don't want to do, we don't, we agree, but we don't want to bring on somebody for, the faculty has been great about, hey, we'll take those for a year and then the next year we get a little smaller because we know that pathway is coming, as, you know, one of our community members said today, we see the numbers smaller coming up. You know, this is our first year at the high school, we had 200-ish kids in ninth grade. Well, that's kind of what's coming up with 265 heading out. And so that's kind of where we're making those reductions and stuff. So I, if I said it too many times, I'll say it again, there's no way we could do this, especially at the high school, the sophistication of, of the licensure there without the faculty support. Our elementary has been same, it's been wonderful, K-6 certified folks, we have a little bit more flexibility, but the high school has missed, and just been phenomenal for sure. And same with our middle school team.
These changes, the staffing and as the budget gets built, that starts at the building level where they know what they need, they, they meet with their, their leaders, they bring that up to you. These are the changes, we know based on our experience, based on the incoming class numbers, that's where all of this bubbles up to the.
Very, Jen, I'll just, if you can go back just to the kind of preserve or protect, that is the conversation. Again, we have teacher leadership teams in each one of our building that meet once or twice a month and have, gave me an opportunity to come in and, and kind of help. What are the things tied specifically to our strategic vision, those elements of things like 21st century knowledge and social emotional wellness? So this is again, why you saw that was preserve or protect that aligned to the pillars of the district. And so that's exactly how we transport. And then also the PTA was kind to let me visit each one of the PTA meetings as well as the district level PTA to help me understand what is the drive there. And so it's, it's, it's choice, it is choice. And so the reality is, is that could class size have gone the other direction and preserve some of the things reduced? Yes, but it's pretty clear not to do that, to every time we've talked, so.
So the elimination, sorry, maybe I'm tired. The staffing that's being reduced, they're still going to be in the district, so we're not, we're not reducing those salaries. We're still, we're still maintaining those salaries.
We are, we are still eight, eight feet, full timers down.
They're, they're, they're going to be down because of retirements or individuals not coming back to your organization that will not be filled. And so there is a net.
The ones that are just being shifted, we're being shifted, we're not, we're not losing their salary on top of that.
They're going to be shifted into a position that is open. So their, their position is going to be.
So their salary might be a little, their, so salary is going to be adjusted? Is that what we're saying?
No, salary won't be adjusted because they're, they're teachers, or if we're talking about the TOSAs.
That's what I'm saying, so say, just example, the two TOSAs, right? Taking them out of the NTSS and the DEI, but their salaries aren't going anywhere because they're staying here just in a different role.
Right.
But if they're covering a position that was.
They were at the top of the pay scale probably when they retired.
Right, so the, the position for the replacement that they're going to maybe, whatever role they're going to maybe shift into, that would then come out of the budget.
So it's a net two, no matter what, negative two, no matter what? Because they're, like, let's say they replace a retiring teacher in another grade level. So you're covering that teacher because we're not paying that teacher who's retiring, they would be moving over to there.
Right, so where will they be going then?
I'll give you an example, so boards accepted resignations and things already, we have a grade level teacher that is retired from primrose. So we have that, I take that away, we need that grade level position, so one of those two positions could go over there and fill it, I gain one position right there because it's not being filled. The same thing with the other position, there's a position over at the middle school here, that position, retirement gone, oh, well, I've got this person over here can fill, so I go from two filled positions down to one.
Right, that's if, if they're certified for whatever position is.
Correct, yes. Yeah, it depends K-6 or if you're 1-6 or if special ed certification, many of our, our colleagues have dual certifications, so it, it really, it really would depend, and so.
But year over year, if we started with 100 teachers this year, we would be at 92 teachers going into 24, 25.
If we did not make those increases to the special education envelope, as we talked about today.
Yeah, I'm just talking about, just talking about the reduction piece of it, whether they shift or anything like that, right?
Yeah.
So no other additions aside, right? If it was all things equal, it's 100 going down to 92, so there was a reduction on that.
Yep, exactly.
And then just to illustrate this point here, correct me if I'm wrong, since 2022, 2023, gen ed in high school went down 4.5 and then we're reducing another four, right? So it's a total eight and a half, so they've seen over a 10% reduction since 2022, 2023 in their full-time teachers in that area, right? I did the math, so yes, that's it.
And you'll, and we've continued to handle that through the attrition.
Teacher reduction, and that's the last two years on that, and we still plan, there's still, and that's through natural attrition on that. So we are seeing teacher reduction in certain areas, you know, as we see the population in certain areas, you know, as we see the population decrease, you know, and it starts filtering into the?
Yes.
Higher schools and that stuff there. So it is going down, but we're not seeing it, you know, or the district's not seeing it in masses, or, you know?
Nope.
Big announcements or anything like that. It's happening due through natural attrition. And here's an example of that.
Yep. And the same thing is taking place in elementary schools. They started this process roughly eight years ago, a decade ago, where there were roughly 12, you know, sections in each grade level around, and now you're approximately eight or nine. And so those happened through attrition. We also, though, did, again, we had to see.
Special education increasing.
Yes. Not by a small mark, appropriately for the needs of the children, yet not by a small number.
No.
And the social emotional wellness for all children, again, is, that's a piece we have certainly dedicated to that. In particular, as we were seeing coming out of COVID, the description I would use is we were seeing some, some behavior from our, you know, early adolescence here that was much more early childhood behavior with things that we were seeing. They just did not have exposure. I don't, I know I didn't necessarily comprehend it as much directly, but at the time, these are children or they're at the elementary school. That's a huge part of what our teachers do is help them to understand how to navigate socially and emotionally in their classrooms. But if you and I are masking all day long, we can't talk, or even worse, the year before, you and I were in separate classrooms with eight feet apart from us, it's, it's taking that investment into that, getting those kids caught back up to their social emotional wellness levels and things. So, and then the complexity of social media continues to haunt me and things like that with, with what's happening with our kids and things. So, but again, I, I think back to the point there is, is that with those pieces, not desirable. If we, to do that, we put this in place for a specific reason. And the reality, though, is, is that we can't have everything that we would like in a budget every single time. As much as, yes, this is going to hurt, I have no doubt that our teacher team and our support staff and our administrative team will do everything we possibly, there will be things we're going to have to slide back on just because we just can't do the lift of everything that we've been trying to go after right now. But preserve and protect the classroom.
Great.
Thank you.
Chris, what's next?
The last slide is just upcoming meetings. So March 26th is our next one, and that's kind of a summary of the budget, kind of bring it all together. And then April 16th, so March 26th, again, I don't envision us having anything new from the state as far as their budget's concerned, but there's always little tweaks that will occur between now and then. Not going to be anything drastic as far as the budget's concerned. And then April 16th is when the, we'd look to have the board adopt the budget. And then May 7th is the public budget hearing. And again, all leading to a May 21st budget vote and trustee election.
Do we have a projection, the increase price, percentage or less?
For the budget, budget, we're looking at, what is it, 4.?
Five, six, I think it was?
Yeah, it might be even a little less, maybe 4.2, something like that.
So based upon this evening, kind of moving head not forward, we'll come back with that budget piece there, as well as one of the things that the board last year helped kind of walk us through was just helped to understand what, you know, what would the budget, you know, purchase value be from five years ago to what it is projected next year? And unfortunately, we continue to see that, you know, the purchasing power, whatever it may be, is not what it would be like. And so we'll have that. And we typically show that in a five-year historical lens, as well as what that purchasing power looks like. So with the kind of the head not of the board approval, they don't want to artificially put that in there without kind of getting the head not. So we'll get it in there along with the last four years.
Great.
And we're going to have a citizens finance committee meeting before that next budget presentation, too, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
On that note, committees and liaison reports. Anybody have anything they want to share?
Yeah, it's a little bit dated because we met like two months ago in the, in the snowstorm. But a couple of things was the new Tusker U podcast came out last week. IB Night was on there, and that was, that happened two weeks ago before the break, Belonging Family Event. I think it's still scheduled for the 4:30, April 30th. And, you know, and I brought up, I wanted to put out that, that state budget thing that was on my notes, but it's on the agenda. So that's, that's about it.
Great.
Cewak met since we last spoke, and the teachers came and did a, sorry, it's the Social Emotional Wellness Advisory Committee. Don't mean to use an acronym. The, and we had some teachers from SIS come and present, and along with some of the other teachers discuss what they're doing in their buildings on the executive functioning training that they've been implementing and rolling out. It's kind of spearheaded at SIS right now just because of the teachers involved in, in doing it. And they're, they're really working on those explicit skills of, of time management, et cetera. But you also see it in Tusker 101, I think, as Mark mentioned earlier. So it's just great to see all of that being implemented through the school district, so.
Anybody else, or?
No, I think policy, we met before the last, I think we already did that, from the last policy meeting.
All right. Great. All right. Next, approval of the meeting minutes. Let it be resolved the Board of Education, having received copies of the minutes of meeting 123, 24, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained, objections, abstain, abstained objections. Personnel consent agenda. Let it be resolved the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained, abstained objections, no. All right. CSC, CPSC meeting recommendation. Let it be resolved the Board of Education, having received copies of the recommendations of the, the recommendations of the meetings as listed on the attached memo, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Business consent agenda. Let it be resolved the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Got everybody. All right. Recertification of lead educators of building principals pursuant to education. Seeing every one of these?
I think you just do the whereas.
Just last thing.
Yeah.
You're on D, right?
Yeah, I'm on D. Which one of the three? Just the, this one here?
Now therefore be resolved, yeah.
Yeah. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District hereby recertifies the following individuals as lead educator of building principals, Dr. Raymond Blanch.
Lead evaluator.
Sorry, lead evaluator. Lead evaluator of building principals, Dr. Raymond Blanch.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Let it be resolved the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District hereby approves the issuance of cell phones for the purpose of conducting district business to the persons in the job titles, list, titles as listed, family liaison, iPhone.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question. How many phones are involved in this?
One.
One. It's only one, one person for?
Yes.
One person in that position.
Because I recall, many years ago, the cellphone assignment even to the superintendent was debated on.
I don't have one.
Nowadays, everybody has cell phone. I don't know what.
It's the only one in the district, I think, right now, is this one.
Anybody doesn't have cellphone is almost, you know, impossible. So I wonder whether it really needs a dedicated cellphone for a service that sort of like volunteering, helping the school district.
This is not a volunteer position?
I know, I'm, I know it's not a voluntary position, but I'm talking about even when superintendent, whether we will give them a, a cellphone or not, is being discussed.
So is your question, why is the cellphone?
Yeah, why is it necessary?
Well, it's necessary. This is a person who is using, and I came to my attention, significant contact on the weekend and on the evening hours, I, times are flexible, to her, that person's own cellphone. So I requested that she look at taking one from the district so she could have a district phone and access, the parents could access her on the district phone, not a personal phone.
And we assigned others in the beginning of the year, didn't we?
No, there are no other ones. This is the only one.
This is the only person?
You're giving her another phone number to her personal address. Personal phone number's not as used, well, district employees have phone numbers in their office that could be accessed outside.
Yeah, and she's out and about consistently.
She doesn't have an, an office in the district.
All right.
Perhaps there's also even cheaper methods by having another phone associated with the phone.
All right. So we'll vote, and you can feel free to vote now if you want. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained, objections?
I abstain.
Okay.
As volunteers, I, I think sometimes we have to.
They're not, it's not a volunteer.
She's not a volunteer. She actually barely gets paid.
Let it be resolved the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District does hereby approve the request from the Board of Education trustee Amanda Candell to attend the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Workshop, Understanding State Aid on March 8th, 2024, at a cost of $20.
Hmm. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
No problem.
Somers Voting Machine Agreement. It resolve the Board of Education, Somer Central School District approves that, 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 that. Let it be further, further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs its officers and employees to take all actions necessary to effect the purpose of and to cause compliance with the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Policies first reading. Let it be resolved the recommendations superintendent of schools, the Board of Education, Somer Central School District does hereby accept the following policies for first reading. Can I just say it's listed below?
Mm-hmm.
It's listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Policies for second reading and adoption. This is the Workplace Violence Prevention, the new one that came down from the state. Let it be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District does hereby accept the following new policy for second reading and adoption. 8130 dot two, Workplace Violence Prevention.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, or no? All right, all in favor?
Staff for getting through that quickly. You guys handled that quick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we'll open up to public comment. All right. So really quick, let me read this. All speakers will promptly identify themselves in a maximum of 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. Speakers may comment on matters of public school interest involving school operations and programs, but not criticize or personally attack any individuals connected with the Somer School District. No district employee or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later date or time. Questions requiring investigation will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response. All written statements shall be given to the district clerk.
Great. Thank you. Charlotte St. Rose, parent in the district. First, just want to say, start by saying, thank you for the really thorough work on the budget. I know while we all have different questions and agree with some decisions or not, it, this is a reminder of how much work you all put into this process. What I think should be added to future versions is the headcount. I think a lot of the decisions that the district makes and you all make in balancing the budget has to do with reduction headcount, and seeing the reduction from, for example, looking at 2018 to now, you could really see the dramatic headcount in all of the different, in the different buildings. So I think contextualizing that or including that in this budget report will contextualize what the district is actually dealing with when it comes to reduction headcount. So, but thank you so much for, you know, for the work and the thorough presentation. Yeah, this goes into the role of the board, what I see, what I've learned, I've come to know the role of the board is into advocating for children in the district and also for families in the district. And I come to you today with the problem that our family is dealing with. And just in terms of, I, I respect the work that the district does to implement the curriculum that either the state brings down or decisions that are made within the district to ensure that children are popular, are properly educated. However, I find myself, and I know other eighth-grade parents find ourselves dealing with some challenges with the science curriculum. So we're bringing, I'm bringing this to the board's attention, hoping that you will then reach out to the superintendent and the, the leaders in the building to figure out some sort of, come to some understanding on what you can do to advocate for us and help us relieve the, the very painful issue that some of us are dealing with. I know it's been said that many parents don't complain. Not all people feel comfortable advocating for themselves or their children. Some parents have said to me that they were afraid that their kids may be targeted or, or in some way treated negatively. And some people just don't like confrontation. I mean, neither do I, but I'm okay with it when I need to, especially when it comes to advocating for my child and our family. So I am coming here seeking your help in advocating for not just me and my child, but also the, the parents who are probably afraid to, you know, to, to make it known that they're, that we're having significant issues dealing with the science curriculum and the implementation of the science curriculum this year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I already signed in earlier. I want to mention that in, in regards to the dean, this is the first year that we're not getting weekly emails from Dr. Blanch. And I want that noted because I feel like my son has not been, has, has not had as many issues. Speaking to other parents as well, their children have not had as many issues this year. We're not getting weekly emails regarding hate crimes and different bullying or hate speech within the district. And I think that is the difference that our dean has made in the middle school. I don't know about the high school, but in the middle school, it has made a difference. Children are being spoken to right away. We're not waiting three days after when a teacher has the opportunity to speak to them. This is something to keep in mind as you are making these decisions. Also, I want to mention that we are still looking for answers on the lockdown. The, the last lockdown happened before break. So that lapse in time doesn't really erase the fear and concern that we have with these repeated lockdowns within our community that our children deal with, and that our children come home saying, yeah, kids, we're laughing about it. It's a joke. And it, it's just like, it's the same story. So we're, we're hoping to get some answers from you guys. What is the next step? What are we doing next? What are we hoping, what are we hoping to do to fix this problem? And I thank Charlotte for speaking up about the eighth-grade science curriculum. I did send an email earlier about this, and I also have spoken to parents who also have a lot of concern. A lot of children have anxiety. They hate science out of nowhere. And I, I, I'm not going to blame the teachers, but I'm going to put this on your shoulders as the board of Ed and, and Dr. Blanch, in the hopes that you guys will create a better curriculum next year for the coming eighth graders. I know that they are putting some things in place now, but it's almost March. So our children have lost so many months of education and of science education, as well as the, the comfort level, the self-esteem that goes with going, coming to school. A lot of kids don't want to come to school. They don't want to go to science class. They don't, they have anxiety. They don't feel good about themselves going to science. And with the amount of SEL that we have in this district, this should be somehow intermingled somehow. I do thank the principal of SMS because she repeatedly has responded to me and has, I, I feel like she understands what the parents are struggling with.
Sorry.
No, no worries. You guys already got my email. And, and I'm happy that somebody spoke to me with questions about the email because now I know that you guys did receive my email. I didn't hear back from anybody. So this confirms that you guys do know about it, which is the concern a lot of eighth-grade parents have, whether or not the board even is aware of this issue.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Ellen Clock. I'm an eighth-grade social studies teacher at the middle school. And I just am coming here tonight to just say that I want to speak about the science curriculum at the middle school. And I just want to tell everybody that there are two sides to every story. I could stand here before you and explain how teaching in an IB NYPD school demands higher expectations and rigor for students. I could, I could talk to you about how new instructional shifts in science focus on phenomena and problems, integrating engineering practices and content, incorporating the science and engineering practices, as well as cross-cutting, cross-cutting concepts. Both frameworks focus on student-centered learning, inquiry, and maintaining higher standards. I'm not an expert in science instruction. I teach social studies. However, I've seen my science colleagues embrace both the changes in our school-wide model, which is the IB model, which focuses on how to teach, as well as the rigor and complexity of their new science standards with expertise, consistency, and flexibility for their students. They are masters of their craft. I'm not saying that this change is easy. In fact, it's hard, and students have, in fact, struggled. But sometimes it's, it's that struggle that brings out the best in us, and we try to, you know, encourage kids that when they are struggling. That, that means they're learning. And, and sometimes that struggle is, you know, is hard, but we provide scaffolding and situations for them so that they, in fact, can, you know, be the best that they can be in class. Mr. Bayer before talked about the Tusker 101 program at the high school. And in this class, I've heard they reflect on learning and experiences in school, but they also write thank you notes to their eighth-grade teachers. they also write thank you notes to their eighth grade teachers. These teachers that they feel have impacted their learning and success as students. I have about over thirty of those thank you notes in my hand that were written to the eighth grade science teachers this year in the Tusker one oh one class. So you don't have to believe me about the science program. You don't have to believe me about the teachers. I'm going to read a couple of these. They are reflective about what the students have to say. I will not be using any ner, any names. Dear science teacher, I still remember how hard your class was. It was my most challenging class in SMS, but it taught me great skills to use in high school and made me want to challenge myself by taking biomed. You helped me improve as a student, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up, though.
Okay. If you'd like to hear more, I could, I could have some other people come up and read them. But it's just the point that, you know, these thirty kids have expressed their thanks and admiration for the challenges that they faced in, in the science program.
Thank you.
We could always, I mean, we always can take printed things, so Nancy could always send them, give them to us, right?
If she wants to give them off, yeah.
Well, I, they, they, I give them to you to look at, but they are, they belong to the science teachers.
Yeah, okay. Current, current students?
These are current management students.
Not current eighth graders. So, anybody else for public comment? Once, twice? All right, closed. All right, now we'll open up to board member comments.
Yep, we got two meet the new assistant principals that are coming in next year. Looking forward to have them onboard. Chris, thanks for putting the budget presentation together. You know, it's not an easy task, especially in, you know, sitting in the finance committee meetings, knowing about the, you know, the big medical increases, you know, tough to deal with. But, you know, thank you for putting that together and, you know, getting it out there for us. And, you know, I guess everybody that watched that full video that was put up there about, you know, the changes, and hopefully we'll figure, I guess, by next month or so, we'll know what they're planning to do with our changes in funding. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Couple of things. I had the pleasure of being at the coffee house at the, at the high school. And, and, and I know our student president talked about it a little bit earlier, but it was just fantastic. If any of you ever have a chance, it is such a cool event that they do at the high school. Support of, I mean, there's, it's ultimately, it's kids, it's like an open mic. They prepare music, they perform, and it's just really an awesome environment and, and some real talented kids there, too. And I just, I love that that's something that our high school allows. I think it actually comes from the students themselves that put that all together. Yeah, thanks for the budget presentation, you know, for, for everyone in our community. This is something that builds throughout the year. If you have questions, you know, hop on. There's a lot of documents that are, that are on the website about how this is built and what goes into it. So, please, if you have questions, dive in, take a look at it. And then, you know, you can always ask questions if you, if you need some clarification on anything. You know, I, I think back to courses I've had through my life, and some of the most meaningful ones were probably some that I, at the time, did not like and did not appreciate. And sometimes some of these things come around later on. I think of, man, I think of a great literature class I had in high school. And we had to give speeches, which I hated, and I was terrified for. But it was something, it lit a spark that I didn't realize until like years later, till I was in college. And, and it's something that I draw upon a lot through my life. So, you know, I, I think there's always good, healthy perspectives when, when sometimes you're struggling. And it sounds like, you know, I, I know what our schools, they, they listen and appreciate certainly what, always what the students are going for, going through, and they hear from their families. It sounds like everyone's working together and, you know, I just, I think it takes a team, so keep that up. But I was just sharing some personal thoughts that I remembered kind of related to that. Anyway, thank you all for coming out tonight.
Chris, thanks for putting the budget together. There's some things that we definitely need to follow up on.
Sure.
As far as the community coming out and speaking, I appreciate that. It's imperative that the community does come out and identify some concerns that they have, or else people won't know. If you keep it amongst yourselves and don't stand up here and voice your concerns, we're never going to know about it. So thank you for coming up and letting us know and communicating that. There definitely will be follow up. And congratulations to Ms. Belger. Good job.
Yeah, I wanted to, yeah, thank you for putting the budget together and answering all of our questions. And thank you also for being available last week so that when we had a chance to look it over, we could ask you, we could take the time to meet if we wanted to and ask questions ahead of time to gain better clarity. And, you know, I think Sebastian, I know he's not still here, but the reports from the high school are just great. And hearing what the student council does and the leadership that those students are developing is great. And I thank them for the work that they're doing to kind of codify what they're doing and their how to's, because that's a great example of keeping those institutional pieces going. I think after COVID, you saw that when students weren't there. And so I think it's great that they're putting things in place to make it easy to keep their, their, their great programs in place. And thank you, I want to thank teachers that are helping to pick up those pieces for some of the, the creative staffing when we have a position that we can eliminate through attrition and then have to kind of piece in sections to fill it in temporarily. I think it's always difficult if you've hired somebody on staff and then would have to let them go, and I know it happens in other districts, you know, often, and that we've been able to manage. I think it would be, if we could look at that, you know, the suggestion of looking at over time, how many positions we have eliminated as our student population has gone down, and how we have been able to do it through a lot of very careful planning that's taken place and anticipation without having to take people's jobs away from them has been, I think that's commendable. And, and for the teachers that pitch in to get through some of those gaps in between, it's appreciated because I know it's, it's extra work. So thank you for helping make that happen. And just thank you to everybody who, you know, is sharing your, your thoughts and your comments with us. That's very important, especially we don't hear from teachers very often, so I appreciated that. And I would, I would, I love hearing, seeing feedback from students and hearing, so I would love to see the notes.
So we're going to make copies of them, and we'll get them to you guys to look at.
Oh, great, thank you.
I was just gonna, I also went to the coffee house, and it was amazing, and it is student-run, I believe by the Tri-M. So it was such a great way to see a student, student-focused event and all the talent that we have in our schools, once again. I already mentioned the, the Cewak presentations on executive functioning, but I also want to thank Chris for the budget. I've spent many weeks with, with him and doing, working on, on these different documents and different meetings with different people. And, you know, none of these decisions are taken lightly. None of these decisions are, you know, just a drop in the bucket for anybody. And, you know, sometimes we have to make decisions that are not always going to make everyone happy, but that's what we are this year, unfortunately. But I really appreciate the change in format to the budget this year, too. I just want to put that out there, that it ties it to the buildings and the people so we have an understanding of where that money is and not just, here's the number and here's, you know, where your taxes are going. So I really appreciate that. And, yeah, and thank you, everyone, for coming out. And I'll be seeing some of you tomorrow morning, bright and early, for the primary year's feasibility study.
Good. All right, I have three points to talk about. First, I really like and appreciate parents, teacher come to talk about curriculum. In fact, I would suggest to the president waive them this three minutes limit. And that's the reason I serve on school board. I'd rather hear those, those comments, discussion on curriculum than anything else. I think that's important, number one. Number two, I appreciate, Chris, you know, this format is good, as you and I talked a lot. I think this kind of comparison is important. I mentioned before about the special ed. It's not so much to, to look for cuts and so on, it's to let people understand how the money is spent. And there's also possibility for us to optimize our spending. I mentioned before, say, perhaps we could even enlarge our special ed program because we have so much, you know, investment in this program, and there's some basic, you know, investment made, we could serve more people, more students. If you just look at, you know, the personnel, it's really close to thirty-five percent, forty percent of the total personnel. Of course, Ray says, well, some are sharing, so on. But just look at the special ed title alone, if you count them, it's a lot of people, all right? And for example, speech, we have five, three, three, four in different schools. That's a lot of speech, you know, specialists. All these probably is serving special ed, maybe some others, too. I just want to bring that picture out. So if you can, next time, to make a cut of a pie chart or something to lump the special ed expenditures versus the total school or regular education, give us an idea how much we invested in this. And this investment probably is worthwhile and could be leveraged for more, okay? Now, third point I want to make is, I talked about that cell phone. It's definitely not personal. I don't even know who is the person needs the phone. I do remember back a few years on, on the superintendent salary and so on, cellphone was an item, okay? You know, certain items are becoming your part of your daily life. It's really not that important. You have to really charge the school system, okay? The school budget is tight. We all try to, you know, spend the money, and a lot of people volunteer. I just feel that kind of mentality should be shared among us, all community people. If we can contribute our time, if we want to help the school, do it. If you cannot, you know, you don't do it. The school budget is not an infinite source, and it's all come out of everybody's pocket. And with, with the inflation, with the situation the economy is going, we're going to have a tough time. So please understand that, okay? I'm not targeting anybody, it's just my nature telling myself, if, if we can do it for the school district, we do it. Thank you.
All right. I'll try to make this brief. A lot of what you guys said, I'm going to repeat probably. But, look, thank you for the budget stuff, but I do want to call out to the building administrators for your effort in the budget planning cycle and putting this all together, right? This is a bit of a, trying to put together a ballet, right, in changes, whether it's incoming students and, and changes for the special ed needs and budget changes, who's leaving, who's coming, who's going, whatever it is. But, you know, thank you for your hard work in putting this together, right? And year over year, trying to, you know, balance that and balance the, you know, the reduction in the students and trying to maintain under the cap. So thank you for your work on that. You know, I do, you know, the board did contribute much more this year, I think, more than ever, you know, in trying to get, make sure that budget presentation was put in a way that was hopefully better received to the community on that, right? Really, we're trying to do a lot to talk about some of the different headwinds and what changes and, you know, the, from inflationary numbers that are coming in, from the, what's getting pushed down from the state, what's not being, you know, given out in revenues from the state. But there's a lot of those, those challenges that need to be balanced in this budget here. So hopefully some of that was, was coming across. If you do have some other questions or suggestions, too, please feel free to email the board outside of this. But we do also appreciate, I do appreciate you guys coming here. It's actually nice to see people, you know, come to the board meetings and contribute and get feedback. I will support Efe in what you said there, right, in coming out and talking about the different curriculum, curriculum items and talking about that in the meeting here and your concerns and voicing that in public. But we do, we are getting those, you know, emails on that stuff there, and we do read that, and it does definitely get our attention. But it's nice to, you know, come out here, too, and also connects with other individuals in the community. So thank you for that. The, look, Amanda, you started touching on it before. No matter what we cut, you know, somebody's not going to be happy. There are some tough decisions that we need to make, right? And, you know, the part of the process that we did go through in trying to identify, you know, what not to cut, right, was kind of, was the focus on this. And what we did is we bubbled up some of the, the more critical ones. You know, while I agree, it's not ideal to do some of this right now, but, you know, hey, we do have to take a look and figure out ways to best balance the budget, especially, you know, now, and I would probably foresee the next couple of years with inflation going the way it is, right? There's going to be, you know, some other decisions that need to be made in order of cutting, you know, cutting some of the budget. But, you know, that's all, you know, assumptions in the future. But again, we're trying to balance out and trying to figure out, okay, great, how do we not impact the kids and the students and reduce our, or increase the class size and, you know, try to take away from any of the instructional learning as best as possible? I think I covered everything.
So just a couple of things, same as conversation before about the voice of the community in the budget piece. So I want to thank the teaching staff and everybody for me to come out and kind of have some of those conversations. PTA, can't thank you enough for letting me to visit each one of the PTA meetings, the district live PTA, and then some of our different groups. So gave me an opportunity to, again, see the clarity because it resonated very much across the school district of what we should be looking to preserve and protect. So be able to go ahead and get that piece there. And again, I, I think you're right, Nick, that the reality of, we'll, we'll see what the future brings, but we do have some, some unknowns coming our way as far as some of the inflationary numbers in some of the state. Again, I have no idea where the state's going to land this year. I'm not confident that our, our number is going to stay close to where it is right now. There has to be some major changes across a good number of school districts across our state to go ahead and have that balanced. So there's a lot of work to be done. The other piece inside of here, too, is that just a reminder, board, we have a site visit later in the week here at the high school. I believe you have a agenda on there for you to go ahead, and so we'll be at the high school. And we actually have, I think Sebastian and some of the students will be guiding us around there a little bit as well. And so we'll see some kids, see some classrooms, have some time to kind of go ahead and debrief. We're looking at the, the international faculty program from all perspectives, from the student perspective. Again, the mid-years program is all students right now, six through eight certified, or accredited, ninth and tenth is looking for accreditation. So it's all shown in there. And then as well as some students who might be taking one class of the diploma program or students who might be going for a full diploma program. And again, reminder that diploma program, approximately fifteen or so students will go for the full diploma program. That's like having a student take eight AP exams. We don't have a single child that's taking eight AP exams. That diploma program is, sets itself up off and beyond as a very unique program. So we're not looking for numbers there, but as you heard Sebastian right there, we had approximately fifty rising juniors expressing interest in a full diploma program. So don't think that number will come aboard, but obviously things are moving. And again, it would commend the leadership from the administration of the high school, with our IB coordinators over there, as well as our teaching staff, so. And then the multiple pathways, as Sebastian again mentioned about the project lead the way work and some of those things, so we're working that forward. I think the last thing that I had was just in relationship to, I think one of our community members spoke about kind of the lockdown piece that we have had inadvertent activation of the lockdowns numerous times. Last one was on Friday, just before the break. To say that anybody in our, our team is not disappointed and frustrated would not be accurate. It's, certainly is there. So our team was doing, our security team was doing some training a little bit before the break. We had a full day, day and a half of full testing of the new procedures in our school district that basically had to take place without any adults and kids here. So our safety director went ahead and, and So our safety director went ahead and enlisted that support here from our vendor as well as from other, other technology members of the team. So it took about a day, day and a half to do that because we want to make sure every single device is working. It took an appropriate piece there. So again, the reality is, is that when we first started this project, I believe we were the only one in the county that had this system. There's maybe three other districts that have it now. Most are still on the old system. You get on, you get on the PA and say, you know, lockdown. That's how the majority of our schools do it still. So the reality of what we were looking at that was to empower all of our 475 or so faculty, if they see something, to do something. And that's a code that they would put inside of our phone system and trigger that. And so it worked for roughly four years without that. And for whatever reason, nothing has changed there. That we've had four separate incidents. So we have changed the way to activate that, that protocol with feedback from our, our kind of safety and security team that met. We've got some board member representation on that team, as well as community members, as well as law enforcement, kind of in our security team in there. So they implement that over the break with that time that we had available when nobody's here. And so we would anticipate and hope that would be there. No longer of that inadvertent piece there. It will slow down the activation of the lockdown procedure. Yet what we've seen as evident, it's just, it has been triggered once as really too many times. And so we've got that change. So we've, we've got that wrestled through.
And that's implemented.
That is done. Yep. Faculty, they came back on Monday. We're giving a reminder of everything we did as of yesterday with some specific protocols for any of those faculty members that know and understand what they have there. And then we'll, we'll get confirmation again with everybody that they're aware of the new procedures. And then if for whatever reason we missed somebody because of sickness and things, we'll go back and grab those employees.
And the old procedures disabled.
No longer exist. Yep.
And that, that was basically the intent, you know, we, we met, the safety team met after those first couple of false alarms. It was identified and the intent was to do it when there was a break because of just what it took to implement.
And we still have, I think we've got a visit next week and another school district's coming to look at the, the system of the program. And so like anything else, we're always learning along, along the way. And I think member, a number of our community members spoke today just about coming and learning about the budget, learning about best programs for our kids, learning about the next right answer, because things are always changing. And so, you know, I want to commend Dan Carrato, who leads our safety security side with all terrorists and our school resource officers are strong partners to help us to, to make this change again. We're not, as educators and things like that, we're relying upon those partnerships. So I want to thank them again. So, thank you, Nick.
Great. All right. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education goes into executive session to continue board training.
So moved.
So moved.